Twenty ninth, twenty twenty five. Commission meeting is called to order. The time is five oh seven P M. Before we get begin, commissioners, please put away cell phones. If you have personal business during the meeting, please move for a recess. If you are participating telephonically, please mute your phone unless you are speaking. Also, when speaking, please state your name for those streaming the meeting. As a reminder to attendees, the meeting is being streamed live. The camera is located in the back of the council chambers above the clock. Will the city planner please call the roll?
Thank you, Commissioner Seals. Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Seals?
Here.
Commissioner Langill?
My buttons not were here.
Commissioner Stafford?
Here.
Commissioner DeYoung?
Here.
Commissioner Seals, you do have a forum with Commissioners Brown, Seals, Langill, and DeYoung and Stafford present in the chambers.
Thank you. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Commissioner Stafford, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Yes, so I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with justice for all.
Thank you. The first item of business is approval of the agenda. Before changes are discussed, are there conflicts of interest to declare? The commission would like to discuss anything under the consent agenda, such as the minutes. They need to be removed from the consent agenda and placed under new business at their, at this time. Are there any changes to the agenda? Hearing no changes to the agenda, the agenda will stand as presented unless objection is raised. We are now at public participation and move directly to persons to be heard. A time for members of the public to share their views with the planning commission. This is not a question and answer period or a time for dialogue. Speakers may be referred to administration or issues raised may be taken under advisement by the commission or administration. Anyone wishing to step forward may do so at this time. With no one wishing to speak, the next item of business is new business. Will the planner please read the agenda item under new business into the record?
Thank you. Under new business, item six point one, planning commission training presented by the city attorney and city clerk, and this is committee of the whole.
Do I have a motion to enter into committee of the whole for planning commission training?
Commissioner Brown moved, moving to the committee of the whole.
Do I have a second?
Commissioner DeYoung, second.
Is there any discussion? If no, there are no objection, the motion passes unanimously. We are now in the committee of the whole. The time is five ten P M. Would the city attorney and the city clerk like to begin their training?
Thank you, Chair. Okay, so I'm gonna start by giving you an overview of our training. As you know, we're here to talk about good governance training and specifically as good governance applies to the planning commission. And so we're gonna, I'm gonna kind of just run over the topics that we're gonna be delving into today, and then I'm gonna talk a little bit about the materials so you can kind of orient yourself to them. One thing I'm gonna say before we even delve in is, you know, I think we, this was scheduled about, you know, two weeks or so ago, and so we worked really hard to get you a full comprehensive training packet and materials so that we can really do this correctly and a way that actually serves your purposes going forward and grounds you in good governance. That said, we are on the precipice of a change to Title sixteen that has significant implications for a lot of the topics that we're going to be talking about, especially how you conduct yourself in a quasi judicial hearing, what that hearing looks like, the notice provisions, the interested parties that will take part in those or may or may take part in some of those hearings. All of those things are gonna see a shift. And so when we prepared the meeting materials, we, we did them with the understanding that, one, that's a very short time period to put together a sixty page packet for, for the commission, but that we're going to wanna revise examples, we're going to need to update code provisions. All of these was gonna change in a matter of, you know, months. And so for that reason, we'll need to do this again after the Title sixteen changes. And I just wanna say that upfront because I don't want you to throw things at me when I'm back here asking for another training session in the near future. But, so I like these to be interactive. I don't think they're as beneficial if they're just us talking at you. It's so much information. The information is nuanced, and this is a great opportunity for you to just say, hey, I have a question or I wanna engage. If we're not making progress because the questions are dominating the conversation, we're just not getting through the topics. I think we have enough time even for a little bit of sausage making in that way, but if we need to, we'll let you know. You know, we'll say, hey, we're gonna move through this section and could you hold your questions? But other than that, I would say, you know, this is a, supposed to be given, taken. I think the, that Jamie conducts her portions in the same way. So the topics we're gonna cover are the Open Meetings Act, and we're gonna go beyond the basics of Open Meetings Act. We're gonna talk about the basics, but we're gonna talk about the way it actually touches your life as a commissioner and the actions that you're taking. We're gonna look at the different hats you wear, your quasi judicial hat versus your legislative hat, and what legislative really means for a commission member as opposed to, say, a council member, and how that, and how those roles, how they play out, especially when you're taking one off and putting one on in the same meeting. We're gonna look at what is acting ethically and the code of ethics as it applies to the commission, which the code of ethics is still a fairly relatively new, new document or, or law, and so understanding what that looks like and how it, and, and what expectations there are and protections there are for commissioners under that code is important. And then we're gonna look at conflicts of interest and how those are addressed. Then we're going to look at a sort of general discussion regarding all of those and how they play together. And we'll try to work on some scenarios, answer some questions, and sort of work on that as a, as a group. And then Jamie's gonna delve into the parliamentary procedure, and she's really gonna try to ground the commission in some of those basic parliamentary procedures that you're gonna be sort of walking through and guided through by the planner at times, you know, but we wanna make sure that you have that, that knowledge base. And then finally, we'll take any and all questions. So that is our approach. And while I know we have reserved four hours, sometimes these move very quickly, sometimes they take longer, but I would say settle in. And then our final message, a very important message is do not kill the messenger. We will be.
That's true. Oh, man.
True. There is gonna be so many things we talk about that are gonna be frustrating. You'll be frustrated with why does it apply that in that way and here and not there? And that doesn't make sense, and that's, and some of it doesn't feel like it makes sense. We'll try to explain what the reasoning was behind it, but we cannot solve it. We cannot change it necessarily, so. So the first thing that we look at when we're looking at the Open Meetings Act is the primary purpose of the Open Meetings Act and what it means, why it's there, right? So the Public Meetings Act is designed to ensure that meetings are held publicly and that proper notice is given of those meetings. And, and really, the notice provision, we'll talk about that. It's a, that's a little nuanced, but let's focus on the meetings being public and what that means and why we would need to do that. So the main focus is the, the purpose of the, the commission or any body, government body, is to aid in the conduct of the people's business. So the theory is you shouldn't be meeting without the public there because the public, it's their business you're conducting. So they generally are gonna have a right to be a part of and participate in their business, right? And that is the Open Meetings Act. That's the purpose of it. The intent is to prevent revolution, frankly, is to make sure that the public doesn't lose trust in the bodies that represent them and make decisions regarding them. And it's to ensure that you act and deliberate openly when you're discussing legislative things, and we'll talk about that too. So members of the public have the right to be informed in the actions the government takes so that they are empowered to control the instruments that they have created. So when you ask yourself who's in control, they are, you know, they are. And that is that fundamental principle that we don't have control creates massive inefficiencies because you have the public in control and these mechanisms we put in place to maintain that, and that is true. Government is not as efficient as private enterprise. It is not designed to be as efficient as private enterprise. The goal is to be as efficient as we can while maintaining those protections, and that, you know, is naturally going to be less, less efficient, less speedy. So one of the things that Jamie and I talk about a lot when we give trainings is your O M A judgment. And this is your spidey sense for what's wrong and what's right under the, under the act. So one of the things we want you to do is really work on developing that. You know, does this feel right? What's the purpose? Am I violating the purpose of the Open Meetings Act? There's a good chance that there's a legal violation in there that you're not aware of. And so if you get good at understanding the purpose of the Open Meetings Act, you know, most, most of the time, you're gonna make good decisions just based on understanding and, and really owning that. And so we're gonna develop your O M A judgment. The other reason why it's important to develop your O M A judgment is there's actually not that many cases under the Open Meetings Act, but there are, you know, we have many examples where a municipality has been challenged and sued for violating the Open Meetings Act. So what we find at the court is they apply a balancing test. They almost always start with the purpose of the Open Meetings Act. And so that is, you know, that is one of the reasons why, why we start there. And I actually think it'll be useful. It's not in the, I'm gonna see if I can pull up and read to you the Open Meetings Act purpose statement. Because we've, we've taken some some sections from it, but I actually, I think the words are more powerful than any summary that I can provide, so. And actually, this will, before I do that, I'm gonna rewind, and I'm gonna tell you what you have in front of you so we're all not frantically flipping. Sorry, that was something I wanted to do. So, okay, what you have today, we have the PowerPoint. You have this book, which is your planning commission training manual. Now again, this is going to be substantially rewritten in a very short period of time, but this is a great start. One of the things that I noticed, I was reading through, and I have to say, I'm so grateful. This is your legal team. This is not me. This is one of our associate attorneys who worked really hard on this and just worked with her to refine materials that we have used in the past. There's some examples that we'll wanna change after Title sixteen has been updated. And so if you see those, you know, please feel free to note, I noticed when there was a reference to property tax in here, I would change that for you guys. But the examples are accurate, and the law is Wassila's law as it stands today, so that should be, you know, useful. So what you have in here is there's an Open Meetings Act section, an ex parte communications section, a section on acting ethically and addressing conflicts of interest. You have a section on drafting good findings, which that is going to be at a separate training, so we're gonna ignore, I believe, that section four. Yep, so we are gonna ignore section four for, for today. And in section five, you have your relevant state statutes. And then finally, in six, you have your, your Wassila municipal code provisions. And that I think we also need to, there are other provisions in the, in the code that we need to include, but we've had a change in some of the laws that are applying to the planning commission recently. So once those are codified, we'll make sure we get that updated as well. Well, darn it. I have bad news. I don't think I can, I can read you the purpose statement because it is not included. Okay, here we go. Jamie to the rescue once again. All right, so the government exists to aid in conducting the people's business. Government units should act and deliberate openly. The people do not yield sovereignty to government agencies that serve them. Public servants have not been given the right to decide what is good or not good for the people to know. People should remain informed so they may retain control over the government they created. Using teleconferences is for the convenience of the party's public and government, and the open meetings actually be narrowly constrained to effectuate these policies and avoid unnecessary exemptions. So we went through, we highlighted a lot of these things, but I think the one that was missing that Jamie has here, which I really commit to memory is public servants have not been given the right to decide what is good or not good for the people to know. I think that is the one. So that in your hearts, in your minds, and we will, and, and so your O M A judgment begins. The other thing you have is this little green, do you guys have a little green thing? All right, so this is, since you wear two hats, this has the Open Meetings Act and quasi judicial proceedings on it, right? And so this is, it's laminated, so you can spill coffee on it and it'll still be there with you. It's a great little device, but it's, it's just very, just a simple, specific questions. And it can, I think it's, can be helpful. I keep one on me actually sometimes, just to, to make it an easy reference. Okay. Does anybody have any questions about the materials or anybody feel like the O M A judgment is already overwhelming them?
Just wanna let everybody know if you need highlighters or anything in your desk drawers.
So the Open Meetings Act mandates that all meetings of a government body, of a public entity, of the state or political subdivision of the state are open to the public. Government body, which is for this purposes, it includes you. So just know that. It includes the commission. It includes committees, right? So that's really important to know. What it does not include is staff meetings, and more importantly for the commission, it does not include when the government body is performing a judicial or quasi judicial function. So when they're holding a meeting solely for that purpose. Now, what that does, what that means, or when you're holding a meeting solely to make a decision in a judiciary proceeding. So the reason why you wanna know this is we're gonna be talking about what hats you're wearing in a specific, in, in your meetings, but there may come a time where a meeting is scheduled solely to make a deliberation in a quasi judicial matter. You're just gonna have, all you're hearing is one, one permit or a variance, right? And so, well, no, well, yes, but in those cases, that's okay. And I don't, you know, a lot of times commissions will panic because it's not the standard course of business, and you're not going to be, you're holding your meeting like you would if it was a, one of your regular meetings. And the reason is that meeting, because it's solely, solely called to act and deliberate on a judiciary matter, quasi judicial matter, is outside, falls outside the scope of the Open Meetings Act. So when that happens, it'll be like, oh, I know, this is okay.
Just to clear. You all can hear me.
Just trying to.
Just to clarify, right now Wassila, we, we do notice all of our meetings. So as, as we change and as we grow, you may hold a meeting where it's just that the subject is, is truly simply quasi judicial. That's what she's talking about. But for now, we do notice all of your meetings, so.
Yeah, and the change you might see is it may not have public comments on the bottom of the meeting, or it may have, you know, but we're not there yet, right? We're not there yet, so.
Confused, but.
Yes. Sorry, Jamie. Yes, I guess I'm getting ahead of the, so we're not doing it now, but it will, it may happen, you know, I do think. And, and if it does happen, it'll be part of a larger conversation regarding how to keep things as easy to understand as possible and to keep those hats as, you know, to make sure they're as easy for you to put on and take off.
Yeah, something real quick. Something that Jamie and I talked about, and I recently saw this on the borough's website, is there, the way that they have the planning commission set up, it's clearly defined, like there's a top section and a mean, it, it almost says quasi judicial. So I'd like to maybe work with one of you or both of you and I'll, maybe I'll put something together and say, hey, what do you think is for the agenda so that it's more clearly defined? Because right now, you can't really tell, is my opinion, which if you were just a member of the public, it would just look like a public hearing, more like something on the city council.
Well, and here, I will add to that. That is a very astute point. I will add that when your code was drafted, as it currently stands, there appears to be some confusion by the drafter on what is quasi judicial and what is legislative and which hat you have on. So if at any point you are feeling frustrated with yourself, like, oh, she said something that, about quasi judicial and I, you know, the draft, the, the code itself, when I look at, for example, what happens right now when you have a hearing, there's this emphasis on the planning commission involving the public and it being a, a matter of public interest, right? And then the public comments are incorporated into the hearing itself, into the process. So, and we'll talk about this, but when you have your quasi judicial hat on, there is absolutely laws that you are following that involve notice and public, public awareness and their participation to a certain extent. But that was all governed by the due process clause of the Alaska and the, and the United States Constitution. So you are making a decision specific to a person or small group or an entity. And so when you make that decision, you have, you might be affecting a property right. And so when you do that, they get due process. And that means there'll be a public hearing, a hearing open to the public. There will be evidence taken. There'll be an opportunity for them to present their position and for opposition to that position and for interested parties to engage. But it is not, but to allow the public to infuse that process with the public's thoughts or their evidence that they are gonna put in, like that actually arguably hurts the rights of the person with the property interest, whose interest is about to be affected, right? And so a lot of the changes in Title sixteen are designed to make sure that you are protecting the public's participation and awareness of these hearings, but also protecting the property owner, the applicant, and, and making sure that process is tailored to them. So those are some of the, and you, I know the commission's very aware because you've just spent all this time with Title sixteen and those sections with Title sixteen, but that is all gonna be wrapped into what we're talking about today. So.
Holly, Commissioner Brown, with that, and some people become upset with me, but there'll be something on the agenda that I know is gonna come down to us having to make a quasi judicial hearing, and you meet someone on the street who wants to have input to that. And I refuse to listen to that. I said, if you, there will be time on this issue where the public can speak. If you really are interested, come to the meeting and do it. I would not take your message to take to the meeting, and I won't allow your message to influence my decision. And I see people sometime engaging conversations on the street, and I think we need to be very careful about that because once you hear something, you can't unhear it.
That's absolutely true. And you're actually, you're required to do that under your code, right? You're prohibited from engaging in ex parte communications. And that is what that is. That would constitute an ex parte communication. So it's a really important point, especially though, so here's, that's easy to say, right? It's easy to say, okay, I'm not supposed to talk about it. But what if someone comes up to you on the street and they say, we really wanna talk to you about the comp plan? I mean, this is, I, the way we've got our city laid out, I'm in a district that I can't do anything, even though there's cars roaring by. I'm in a rural residential. It doesn't make any sense. I wanna talk about the comp plan. As planning commissioners, can you talk about the comp plan? Yes, you can talk about the comp plan. You can, in fact, we love it when you talk about the comp plan. A lot of you have been, have been appointed because of your passion and your engagement with your community on these issues, on land use issues, right? That's very important. So what if that same person is like, actually, you know, what else happened on my property? I just filed an application for conditional use permit to try to get at some of these issues. And then you're like, whoa, wait. Yeah, and then you're there trying to explain to this well meaning member of the public while you were so engaged and excited to talk to them, and now they need to shut it. You know, and you don't know, like, you have to navigate that conversation, which is hard for you, but it's also hard for them because it almost looks like, I don't know what ridiculousness you're peddling. You were just talking to me. Clearly, you are done talking to me. And so then that, you know, so being able to understand it enough to say, I know this is frustrating, but I really cannot talk to you about this. You know, I have to stop or I'm violating the law. And it's because it's about something specific to your property. So I can talk to you about the stuff that is specific to the city's plans for all of its property, and I know those can impact your property, but the second it has something to do with your address, I just can't do it, you know? And so just kind of practice, it's worth it, I think, to kind of think about, how would I respond to that if it's switched, you know, so that you're ready to go. And, but we'll spend a lot of time, and we're kind of out of order, but we'll also talk about what to do when it happens because it will happen. And you will violate the Open Meetings Act, in my opinion. I think everybody will, not on purpose, off, like very much accidentally. And maybe you'll get lucky and you'll be, you'll defy the odds. But when it does happen, and I guess I should change that, you're not going to violate the Open Meetings Act. You're going to do something that is not allowed under the Open Meetings Act. But you're not gonna violate the Open Meetings Act because the Open Meetings Act expects people to fail. And so they provide a mechanism to fix it, and that's curing. So cure, 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 we're gonna say it all the time. I'm gonna emphasize it a lot. And that is the, the Open Meetings Act itself, the state statute, actually provides for provisions on how to, how to fix it. Most of the time, that's just disclosing it and then trying to undo to the extent there is, you know, if something has happened, if, if you have, for example, engaged in ex parte communications, well then, when that hearing is happening, the first thing you're gonna say is, I actually had this discussion on this date, right? And if, and if it happens in a way, or you don't disclose it in time, then the planning department is going to call us, and we're all work with the commission on determining if we need to provide a new hearing or take whatever. But don't be afraid of any of those steps because they're all anticipated. You know, it's frustrating, but it's part of the process.
Holly, may I add something real quick? This, now you correct me if I'm wrong, but this helps me. If you're the final decision maker, like in a, in a conditional use permit, that's when you don't wanna engage. If you're acting in your advisory, you're not the final decision maker, right? You're gonna send that comp plan up to the city council, and the city council is going to make the, is the final decision maker. That's your legislative role.
Sort of, yes. I mean, I think there'll be some, there's some roles that they have that are legislative, but I would consider a decision making role. You know, but yes, and those, and those are odd, but yes, generally speaking, that's what Jamie gave you is a great rule of thumb. You know, if I'm gonna say yes or no to something and no one else is going to be able to, you know, make that final decision. But just remember, that doesn't mean there's lots of right, there's rights of appeal, for example, to a hearing officer or something. Your decision is still a final decision that then is being appealed. So, you know, but yeah, I think that's, that's a good way.
But as you're talking to that citizen and they bring up the comp plan and, you know, everything sounds fine, but when that citizen says, and I understand you guys are rewriting it, and I don't like this portion, do you cut off the discussion at that point?
No, because it's still legislative. See, that's an excellent question. They're gonna, they can tell you what they like and don't like. Anytime you're looking at an ordinance that changes code, that's gonna be legislative. Anytime you're looking at, and so, and here's a great example, the trickiest one, I think, by far, is rezoning. So rezoning is actually different in different states. Some states, rezoning is considered a quasi judicial function. So someone comes in for a rezone, and, on their property, right? And they're going through, and you're thinking, are working through the criteria that applies to a rezone, you have one person standing in front of you, who really wants it to happen. You know, you might have a few others that really don't want that specific rezone to happen. You can identify the person, you can see, and it affects their actual property rights in a much more direct way. But in Alaska, that is legislative. In Alaska, the way they look at it, they look at it as you are amending the zoning map. You know, and the zoning map is really part of your laws. And so when a person comes in and they wanna change, that change is only, you're only allowed to approve it if the change serves the interest of the public, right? And so that process, even though it can feel very quasi judicial, is actually legislative. Your conditional use permits, your variances, those are all your quasi judicial hats. Um, looking at an ordinance, um, looking at Title 16, that's all your legislative hat. Because those laws will go on the books, and they will affect every person, period. And every, they'll affect the property within the boundaries of Wasilla. So, and we'll, we'll work.
May I have a, have a quick question? So, as it stands right now, on the rezones, they hear that here, and I understand it's going to potentially change, um, and I have to refresh my memory on how, but it's the city council who makes the final determination on the rezone. Is that what, is that a helpful way to think about, that that's more legislative than?
Yeah, but I think one of the things, so being legislative doesn't mean making the decision. So, I mean, the, and Jamie's example's great, because for you guys, staying out of trouble means recognizing, well, if I'm making a decision, it's probably quasi judicial, right? Because the way that your code is set up, so much, so much, a lot of the legislative things that you weigh in on, you're weighing in on it and making a recommendation to council. But legislation, like, it being legislative doesn't turn on whether or not it's a decision or not. You can be advisory and still making a legislative decision, right? So you're making decisions that deal with laws and policies for the public. That's what makes it legislative, is the nature of the beast, which is, you make decisions. So if we go, let's see if we can go and look at your, what you do. So this, I'm on page thirty-nine of the book. So we're gonna go through them. Periodically review the land development code and make recommendations to the council for amendments. Legislative or quasi judicial?
Amendment is changing the, the rules, the, the contract, whatever, the law.
Okay, so, as far, so the code, it's affecting the code, right? So that is legislative, right? And even though it's, what you're doing is advisory, you have your legislative hat on. And that means, if you meet to do that, you are subject to the Open Meetings Act, right? And that means, the majority of you cannot meet, right, outside a publicly noticed meeting. And so we'll talk about that more, we're kind of going, but let's go through them, and we'll put our, and then you can keep them in your mind's eye as we go through the rest of the presentation. So undertake a general review of the comprehensive plan, at least once every two years, and make recommendations to the council for amendments. Correct, legislative. I should've brought candy to, like, throw at you guys.
I can come up with something.
Oh.
I bet she can.
That would be helpful. Annually, review one or more elements of the comp plan and make recommendations for amendment to council. Yes. Review and make determinations on state construction projects in accordance with statute thirty-five, thirty-ten, and may impose conditions or modifications on these projects. That's right, and what a weird one. And let me tell you, like, this is an unusual duty or authority that's been granted to you. And how that gets exercised, you know, is something that we're trying to figure out, because it's unusual. You do not usually find this in a planning commission list of duties. So if the commission determines the project should be disapproved, or that modification should be made, to which the state disagrees, the commission shall immediately notify the council and recommend disapproval by council resolution. So there, they've put you back, and what hat do you have on there?
Like, the legislative, I would say.
You're legislative. So this is ridiculousness.
No, no, no.
But completely lawful, but it is difficult to navigate this, and unusual. And I, when this was placed here, someone undoubtedly was trying to make sure commission had a voice in weighing in, but not only put you in both a quasi judicial and legislative role, arguably, they also put you in an administrative role. They've put you in a role to negotiate with the state. So we're just gonna circle this one and move on. Because, but when we go through that, that is not something that we will put you in a position to go through without a lot of, um, input and guidance.
Chair of seals, but that, the top part of that is, is really important, I think, that we have, um, the actual power to recommend that something changed or disapproved. I just see that as a, as a very important tool.
Then I'm gonna add, to just to play devil's advocate, what if it's something the city council, what if you were on opposing sides?
Yeah, well, and it is, it says may impose conditions and modifications.
I don't know, I don't have the answer, but.
Yes, so this provision, it takes, it, it's contradictory to many of the provisions and the, and the delegation of authority, because, I mean, Jamie's right, it's, one, it, there's the council's authority, but even the council's authority to make these types of modifications to a specific project is carefully balanced in the provisions with the administration's authority. Generally, the administration negotiates, council approves. So, to the extent, if I were rewriting this, right, I would, I would, and that's, if the commission retains this, this authority, it would be in an advisory capacity, that they have a right to look at these contracts and recommend modifications. Arguably, even that step should be recommend, uh, recommend, sorry, modifications to the administration. So the administration can take those and use those. Then we can make the ordinance or resolution approving the contract, with the contract come before the commission. And then the commission, again, would recommend action to the council. So you would just sort of bring it through the council, and that way, so you're still getting a voice on both the administrative front and the legislative front.
Let's prolong this, Commissioner Brown, are you implying that the administration has the power to make the decision without input from the commission and the council?
No, I'm saying, they, they can negotiate. And then the document that they negotiate comes before the council, or the, and rarely the commission, but in this case, the commission. So the commission and the council always have the ability to say, and again, the commission, I think, generally would have the ability to say, we don't like this, we think you guys should know. Because it should be, and if you think about it this way, an elected official, right, saying no to something like that. And the reason why the administration, why that division of power and authority is so important, the administration hires people who have engineering degrees, who have experience and knowledge in, and transportation, and all of those pieces and plans. And while you need oversight, and to undermine those micro considerations, leads to, a lot of times, to very inefficient government, sometimes even just dangerous planning, right? Because if you put the legislature in the position to come up with a blueprint, you know, it's like putting a lawyer in a position to come up with a blueprint, in some ways, which the house will fall down, if I put up, right?
And, and I get what you're saying, I'm, I'm just concerned, maybe it's the wording I'm looking at here, and maybe that's what's causing the problems, the wording.
That's what she said, that's what she said, let's circle it and move on, because, yeah, it's interesting.
Yes, this wording provides you the authority to modify and adopt conditions on a contract. That's the authority that council does not have, you know, on, on, in almost every scenario. So it is very surprising. But at the same time, these, this, you know, laws come from something.
It checks in a balance, you know?
Yes, and I think that's the thing, when looking at this, maintaining that checks and balance, yes, is essential. But making sure that it aligns with the role of the commission is important, too, so.
The problem I'm having is two sixty was just passed by the council, and the wording as far as state contracts, to me, is very clear, and it doesn't say this.
So, the two sixty does, I think, was, I, I, that's right, I think we already corrected this. I think.
Yeah, it says, review and make determinations on state construction projects in accordance with A S thirty-five, thirty-ten. The commission shall submit a resolution to city council recommending approval or denial of projects under A S, with or without conditions, no more than forty calendar days after the plans are submitted to the commission for approval by the state.
We fixed it, that's right, that's exactly what we said we were gonna do, and I know it's a mouthful.
What, I think, what page are you on, Ms. Langill, and what section?
Oh, this is on the two sixty twenty E, right? Zero twenty, duties and powers, it goes down to E.
It's on page four of ten.
Perfect, thank you.
And that is an excellent, we should switch to using this. Sorry, I should've started using this, too many changes.
And I think that's what's so difficult, is everything's in flux.
Yes.
So we're trying to do a job here, and we're saying, which one do we use?
Yes, and we need to, so, and that is, we're so close to the flux, and we're really focused on sort of those larger, like, understanding what hat to wear and developing your own judgment. But it is really, because we're in flux, you know, and so that creates, so let's start, but let's do this. And, because I think using the, um, the code as it stands is confusing. And I might, I mean, we'll see, I guess we're only two months out. So you will be getting an updated one of these with all of the updated laws, which will also be reflected on the website, right? Because a lot of these, the code provisions are not yet codified, you know?
Yeah, I checked today, and it still shows the old one of this.
Yeah, I, me too, I checked this morning to see if maybe, and so I think that's, which, they're moving quickly, but the publishing, uh, code companies, I mean, that would be very, very fast, so, you know, we're, so, um, let's use this one, we'll go fast through the first. Periodically review the land development code and make recommendations to council.
Legislative.
Correct. Prepare and submit to council a proposed comp plan. That is legislative. Review, recommend, and administer measures necessary to implement the comp plan. Now, see, this one, the reason why you're, might be pausing, is that is also legislative. But it feels like, because there's gonna be some decisions in there, right? Because you're gonna administer some components of the comp plan, um, from Title twenty-nine, that gives you some more authority, but that's still legislative. You're still not making a decision regarding John Doe.
We're just thinking about it.
Right, you're thinking about the decision that impacts all the John Dohs, right? Like, and so it's not specific to a person, or an entity, or even a small group of people, like, you know, that got together and owned a property or something, it's about Wasilla. And so it might impact a small group, in a sense, because you're looking at just this district, or just B farmers, or, you know, just. Yes, but they're defined by something other than, so, it's not just their interests you're looking at and weighing. That, you're looking at a larger interest that just happens to impact a smaller group of people, so.
So will Dow be presenting the comp plan draft, comp plan to the commission for consideration prior to it going to the council?
Yes, I think the, I don't know the exact process of how you're going to schedule your hearings. There'll be public hearings, and I haven't looked at the RFP, but a lot of times that's laid out. Most of the time, whoever is hired will come to, um, yeah, that will come to the administration, and also the council, and they'll have sort of a plan. And we're gonna have X amount of public hearings, and this is gonna go to the planning commission in X way, on X date, with X amount, so you're very much engaged in that process by law, both under your code and under Alaska statute, you're a big part of that process, so.
And, uh, B says prepare and submit to the council a proposed comprehensive plan. So it almost reads to me like, we're the ones presenting it. Whatever the Dow puts together comes to us, and then we present that to the council.
And then you do it, and that, that, yeah, I think, and I would have to say, I have not gone through a comp plan with you guys, you know, and seen how Wasilla has approached it. But I do think, yes, you are going to be, the planning commission is both the protector of the comp plan, and it's sort of, the public, when you're engaging in land use, that's the domain of the planning commission, in a lot of ways, when land use, right? Not so much, um, so when it comes to each of the, um, when you're looking at districts, that's in Title sixteen. Anything involving Title sixteen is coming to the planning commission. So that is part of your role, you know? And we don't make decisions on Title sixteen without engaging in, um, uh, a discussion with the planning commission. And then the planning commission will issue a resolution recommending either approval or denial.
So this is still legislating to the commission?
Yes, and it's an interesting way to think about the importance of the role that you play. So there have been cases where the public has tried to initiate a law, right? And it's on, in land use. And the courts have said, you don't get to do that. Not because they don't have a right to make the law, or they don't get to usurp council's authority, but because they cannot usurp the, the voice of this body, of the commission. That the commission's role in that process is statutory, and a decision-making commission, like the planning commission, um, has that role to play, and that role's a very protected role. So it's very unique, and there's no other commission that has that type of legal authority or protection in the process, even above the public itself in that scenario. But it's not a right to make decisions, it's a right to inform them. That's how I would think of, you know, a planning commission.
I have one thing to add. So last night, Commissioner Langill, you asked directly to Laquita, you, you asked her, what is our role? And her response was that you're a stakeholder, is that, or is that how you remember it? Or how do you remember that she answered what our, what our role is, your role as commissioners?
My, at last, my meeting? Okay, when I asked that, it's kind of big.
That's what, yeah, so.
I seem to remember the phrase that they just said, we're a stakeholder. I, I, I remember the same way.
Stakeholder.
That's what she said.
That's accurate, Holly?
Who said that?
Um, Laquita.
Laquita with Dow, so she gave an overview, we had our kickoff last night with the comp plan, and it was a very high-level type of, hi, we're Dow, and this is what's coming. And so Commissioner Langill had asked her, well, what's our role, or as a commissioner? And Laquita said that, that they were, that you guys were stakeholders, but do you feel that's accurate, or?
I mean, I think so, I mean, stakeholder is such a benign term.
Yeah.
You know, you can be a stake, I'm a stakeholder in a lot of things, according to me.
Any citizen is a stakeholder in the comp plan.
Exactly, and so, and so is the administration is a stakeholder, and so is the commission. So I absolutely think it's an accurate statement, but I don't, I, but does it help you understand your role? I'm not sure it's deliberate or precise enough to get you where you need to be on this. And the, and the reason is, that discussion, your role in the comp plan, is best understood by, first, we have a sort of layout of the timeline and the hearings, and we see where the commission is in that layout. And we see where the commission is in that layout. And then we look at what your authority and responsibilities are, not just to, to propose a comp plan, like you say, but, and like 2060 oh two oh says, but also to maintain it and amend it, right? So when the planner, when she's acting as the staff to the commission, right, and sort of leading the commission through its, its required roles and duties. One of those things is, should we come up with a, you know, a process, a schedule for when we look at the comp plan? And when we look at components of the comp plan? Should we make that part of our agenda so we can see it coming? And, you know, and should we incorporate the discussion of how that happens and the role into the comp plan process, you know?
That's an excellent idea.
So, it's something to think, and then you know. So when a new commissioner comes on board, they say, oh my gosh, it looks like next year they're gonna be revising their comp plan. Or it looks like the year after they just look at amendments. So you can start thinking about it, you know, and processing through what you wanna, and then, but that's guided on your agenda by the planner as you, and, you know, working with the chair to come up with an agenda that lays those things out so that you're also doing it in a way where the city can give you the resources you need to do it properly.
Well, I know the, I read the contract with Dow and nowhere in that contract does it state clearly that the planning commission is involved, not mentioned.
So that's, well, that's a really good point. So I think that's a very easy conversation, because the contract would not necessarily have to refer to the planning commission or what will is their plan, their, you know, their plan, their ETA, like, how they're gonna roll it out. Like, that's usually when I'm, because I'm very rarely involved in the comp plan process, right? And, and it's really great to be a lawyer and then everything gets done. You're like, I don't know about that, you know? You know, that's a very luxurious role to be in. But I think what we can do is we can work with Dow to make sure that, because I'm, you know, as you say it, I'm thinking, I don't, I don't know that it's necessary or even that helpful to have a comp plan team that is overly focused on the laws rather than the reality. You want them grounded in. And they, but they're grounded in the professional, the, the, the pieces that apply to actual land use and development and where the city's been and where it's going. So I think one thing we can do is just make sure that we give them the information we have on the law, you know, and, and the planning commission's role. And we make sure that, that we're a resource. So Cindy, does that sound good? I mean.
I think it sounds excellent. Yes, thank you.
Okay, so that's something. So see, you're training us.
Can you work with the contract administrator to get a clear understanding the roles and responsibilities of that contract?
Well, I don't know that the contract is so much, so we don't approach it with the contract, like you must do this. We approach it through the product. I guess that's what I'm trying to say. The product is the comp plan. The product is the hearings that you have to inform the comp plan. Yes, and we make sure that we protect the planning commission's participation, recommendations, oversight in a lot of ways of that process. Because the commission has that role to play and actually has to, as you pointed out, propose a comp plan in accordance with the statute. So whether that's done through joint meetings, whether that's done, you know, what way that's done, that is about the process. Not just about the contract that just retains Dow to actually draft the.
But my concern, without some formalized document, where is Dow getting information from now? They getting it from the clerk's office, the mayor's office, or from the lands office, you know?
I'm not, you know, one of the things we can do, what, this is what I would.
My question referring to is, at the end of the day, we must look at their comp plan and make a recommendation to the city council. And what I'm seeing could happen is somebody outside of this room write that whole comp plan, feeds Dow information, and then they bring us a product that they expect us to make a recommendation and we had no input to that process. But by statute, we have a statutory obligation to be, look at how Title 16 is being engaged in the comp plan.
No, it's, I, it's fair. We should make sure, what if we buy, for the, make sure we get on the agenda sort of a, I think we probably need to have a comp plan discussion and get an idea of, and I, I feel like I'm, I don't want to weigh in too much because I have not sat down and really poured into the documents surrounding the comp plan.
In a way, this is, this is outside of your training plan.
I have a question. I do, I do have a question. Do we, do we get to sit with it for forty days and figure it out? I mean, are they giving us that time to take the comp plan to, to put our input? I mean, I'm wondering.
Yeah, well, and I think that it's your role is. I, I do think that your role is a core, you have a core function with the comp plan. And so I want to look at the documents and see if that your core function is anticipated. And if it's not, I'm looking forward to working with Dow to make sure that they're bringing back something where it is. Because that's absolutely within your role as the commission. And arguably, when I think of the commission, you've got a bunch of funny things in here, right? The construction, you know, that was unusual. But I, you know, but it's great. I'm not, I'm not saying that it's not unlawful. But the two things that you do that are consistent across the board in every community that has a decision-making planning commission, because somehow they have advisory commissions, you, you are engaged in reviewing and making recommendations regarding the comp plan. All right, so you're engaged in that process and you make, you're a decision-making body on the permits, that, land use permits and certain land use, uh, that, I guess, and, and making recommendations regarding land use laws in the city. That's really the, you know, that's sort of the, your meat and potatoes, your bread and butter. So we do not want a comp plan process that does not engage you properly. So we'll make sure. And I think we're at an early stage and we can make sure it happens.
So just so everybody knows, we don't have to, I think we're getting way off balance here, but AM number 2455 approved the contract to Dow for the development of the comp plan. Attached to that AM is the contract and it, it has a lot of the questions you're asking from scope of work to deliverables to process is addressed in that contract.
Okay.
And so it also identifies the project manager on the city side of that process. I don't know who that is. But.
So I'll weigh in for just a second here. I, I'm gonna have to admit something here. I had a very bad headache the day that we met with, with Dow. I have, and usually I'll remember exactly what happened during a meeting and I can run up and grab my little notebook in which we discussed quite a few of these things and, and quite a few things that we didn't.
So I think that.
But I think that there's more coming and I don't think they're just gonna, you know, run.
I, I suggest we move on with the plan.
But I do think this is, this is, you know, this is appropriate that we are talking about this. We are talking about your roles. And it is appropriate that we continue the discussion at a meeting where we have it on the agenda. And what would be great is we could also potentially involve Dow in that agreement, in that meeting. So it's on the radar. We will, if that.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
So that'll be, and that'll be fun.
As the protector, I mean, it's like, okay, you guys, you're not shoving this down our throat.
And so, okay, so you also annually review one or more elements of the comp plan and make recommendations to council regarding the need or lack thereof for amendments to the comp plan. What, what role are you wearing? What hat?
Yes.
What?
Yes.
I thought you said, I was like, what?
So the review and make determinations on state contract projects in accordance with, so this is interesting. So while you're still, while you're still kind of quasi-judicial in that you're looking at a specific contract that affects one entity, which the state counts as, right? But in, but here, you don't make a decision. And so this is the one time we're not making a decision, when you're in your quasi-judicial realm and all you're doing, that really is not a traditional quasi-judicial role, because you're just making a recommendation. But just doing it regarding one person. So what I generally advise when you, when you are in that role is that you do sort of an abbreviated due process, right? So that you are making sure that the, that you're checking the boxes and that the public has a chance to participate, that you have, you have an interested party, they have a chance to present evidence. But you do, you, you, you make it clear that that role is not creating a right to appeal and that your role is not quasi-judicial. It's just an oversight role. It's just advisory. You're not making a decision. So there's no decision to appeal. This comes up in other places. Comes up in plating, right? So in plating, often the borough is going to turn to the commission for consideration of a subdivision or a plat. And in some cases, there may be an agreement where you're going to make decisions and, that are decisions and then your role is quasi-judicial. In other cases, you're just passing on recommendations or, or suggesting, recommending a denial. But you can see how, especially where you're, we have to then look at how does the borough process that information? Under the code, does your recommendation, does it kill it? Because some, in a lot of communities it does. The way the borough has it right now, it doesn't kill it, but it effectively, you know, I think give a lot of deference to what you recommend, but it does not a mandated rejection and so, or denial. And so that is also a very kind of sticky area that when we go through those, and that we can't fix because it's not based on our code. It's based on the borough's code. But we talk to them and try to understand the process and make sure we're as aware and the public is aware, as aware as possible when we go through the process. But that's sort of the one time. So now E is still weird in the sense that it still is, you know, but it is, so long as you're given that authority to weigh in on that process, it's never gonna be a perfect fit.
But that process, the commission's consideration, is that based on actual information or just on lists of the projects?
I don't, I don't think that, I mean, I think that that's a question, there's, this does not mandate what your role, what you, what information you receive or don't receive. And then we get to the place where when you're making requests for information, right, there's a way, there's, the administration is also weighing resources. And how much, so, and how much to give or include and what level of consideration you're looking at. And I think you had talked before about what, what about having testimony or witnesses, right? And that's really with the commission, which the authority the commission does not have necessarily is to expend municipal resources. And so that is another reason why it's an odd, it's an odd thing to place in the commission's list of, of duties and powers because of those limitations. So for example, if you're on the council, you have a statutory right and a codified one, but a statutory one, perhaps most importantly, under Title 29, to sponsor law, right? So you get to put ordinances on. And there's, we can put some parameters on what a sponsorship looks like and when it's considered. But we, but what the clerk's office works hard to protect and make sure that the, the authority is there is to bring the law eventually. So the, not eventually, but I'm just saying, it's not like you can say, I want to make a law and then I say it is, and it is so, right?
Sponsor it, right? Like I say, I want to sponsor no more roundabouts, or whatever. And, and then it, yeah.
Right, and there may be an administrative requirement that a second sponsor is included or, but in general, we cannot do anything that would federate that, that right. So for the planning commission, none of those authorities are there. You don't have a right to bring a resolution. So one of you could not show up tomorrow and say, here's five resolutions I want to see on that. So you don't have.
Sponsor, we just can't make them into law?
Well, you can't really, you don't have the right to say, I want to see this resolution made, you know? That's not within the commission's authority. So what you can do though, is the commission has a body. So you as a commission member, I think this is the way to put it, a commission member does not have a right to say, I'd like to see this resolution placed on the agenda. The commission has a right and a duty to make recommendations, right? And to, and to go through procedures that involve resolutions and we can see those in your duties and your powers. There's a reason for this. And the reason is, there's only so many resources, right, for a municipality. And so it's important, like, what they're, what's being asked of the commission members who are appointed is, is substantial. You are making decisions that impact the due process property rights of members of this community. That is the most essential role, arguably, that the commission, maybe not even arguably. So you are, whereas the council sometimes makes many decisions and weighs in on lots of things that don't have much to do with the constitution. Every decision you issue in a quasi-judicial matter involves the constitutional rights of, of somebody. That's pretty hefty. And with that comes the need to have processes and procedures and clean laws and rules and, and all of those things in place. And to have staff that is available to make sure all of that is handled properly. And then to have funds to deal with any repercussions, right? So for that reason, the commission's power or control over your own body is not, your governing body isn't as broad as council, right? And I think that is in part because council is elected and so it's, it has that, those are, the members have the right to bring a sponsorship because they were elected and they're speaking. So, but it's not, you know, it's, that said, if you, if there is legislation or you feel like, for example, you're saying, we haven't considered any amendments to the comp plan the whole time I've been on the commission, I feel like we need a resolution. You know, then that is where you engage with your staff and say, I think we have to take up this issue. And then staff will get on that, you know, get that on the agenda. I think what I see in a lot of municipalities is, this is all laid out. They work on laying it out. And so the planner, and we have a new code, new world, you know? So, but one of the things Cindy and I talk about is, okay, you know, we need to look at these duties and make sure we have a year, right? Where are these top, these issues, these legislative pieces coming? And when are they being discussed? And then we turn to the clerk's office and coordinate, because every decision you make generally triggers consideration and time from the, from the council. So. That is, did I say anything? I'm gonna look at the clerks and see. No, okay. Cindy, do you feel?
To make it really easy, in a nutshell, are you, are you saying, because I'm, I'm learning too, the planning commission's really duties and powers lie within this 260 oh two oh, very, um, A through K, to where the council is, has a lot more latitude, very broad. They can sponsor and it is in our code and it's in statute. So that's really, we want to focus on A as a commission, A through K. And so if I was staff on the commission and somebody asked me for something, I would probably say, well, let's see. Does it, is it A, you know, A through K, where does it land? Is that kind of what you're saying?
Yes, I mean, I think there are these limitations, you know, and there are, and that does not mean that, there are these limitations because you're limited through an A through K, as Jamie is saying. But within A through K is the comp plan, right, and quasi-judicial proceedings. So you have a significant amount of power and, and authority and a responsibility within those provisions.
So I have a question on Eden, referring to state projects. Does this mean every state project in the city limits is gonna come before us? Or do we need to be driving around looking for state DOT trucks, taking surveys or whatever? I mean, are, is, is the state gonna be bringing these to us? Because it sounds like to me, are, do we have to go find them?
No, you do not have to go find them. And I, you know what, I would like, I think we need to spend more time on these. So what I'm gathering from this, and I think we're gonna pull this outside, because I really need to spend some time with Title 35, which is where you're deriving this authority.
That's what I just pulled up. In fact, I was looking at 35 going, oh.
Yeah, it's a.
This is good.
Yeah, so we need to, I think it would be helpful, and I think we can do this pretty quickly at our next meeting, but we'll talk about these duties. I really just want to. I really just want to spend some time with 35. And also take a look at how others are engaging, if at all, their commission in that process. So we can talk about that because a lot of the parameters are going to come from the state statute. So if, I don't mean to leave your question unanswered, but I don't want to, I don't want to answer it.
We kind of are answering it.
I just wanted to throw it out there and just see where we're going on that stuff, so.
No, and I think understanding that is, okay, so we were, we're going to talk about the comp plan a little bit more. And we're going to look at the, we're going to look at Alaska statute 35 and your, and your role there. And I also want to talk with the clerk about council's role in that realm and how that's played out, so.
And then when you, I think there's still a question from Commissioner Langill, which I'm not clear on. And you correct me if I'm wrong, how do items get on an agenda? So say it was related to the comp plan or it was related to something. How, what does that process look like? And maybe we don't know. I know what that process looks like for council, I don't know what it looks like for you.
Yeah, and I think in a lot of ways, and Cindy, correct me if I'm wrong, but.
This is new territory.
Okay, so we're inventing what that looks like for the first time. Because I do think that, you know, I think the planner is wanting to have, so there's different styles, there's different approaches, right? And to how planners engage with a commission. And how those, and how much transparency and how much input is provided and in what way. So some planners are extremely, I'm going to use the word rigid, but I do not mean it in a bad way. I actually mean it in a good way from my perspective. I like this, you know? They have a system. And it is a, okay, here are the duties of the commission. I am going to take and look at these duties and I know that. So usually a comp plan review happens every five years, right? So you would have a planner saying, okay, this is happening this year, I'm planning out five years. And we're going to review amendments in November of every year. And so, and the rest of the, and then they go through each of these pieces, right? And they find, when you can, you schedule them. So people can schedule their vacations, you guys can go and do things and be like, well, I know we're all here for comp plan. I know that I've committed to be on the planning commission and it's very important that I'm here in November because that is when we go through the amendments, you know? And we, and the public starts to know, the public starts to count on that, you know? Well, I know, last year I went and it was, they did it in like November. And, you know, so I think I'm going to check up, there it is, it's happening in November. And it's subtle and it's somewhat subconscious, but it creates a lot of certainty, in my opinion. And then I, so I think your agenda starts to look like that and you see your quasi judicial, which you don't have control over, right, which is governed by your code. There's certain time periods, decisions are made, applicants, appeals are taken. So that lays out most of your agenda. A lot of times quasi judicial is the predominant part. And then there's this legislative piece, which is the scheduled procedures. And so then, so what's happening now a little bit, I think is the commission is saying, well, what about that? Aren't we going to talk about that because you're being very respectful of your duties?
Holly, if I could interrupt. The way it worked before, when I was our co-chair of the planning commission, anybody could call me other chair and say, have we thought about this? We would get with the planning, the planner to decide whether it goes on the agenda. If it was a big item, we brought it to the whole commission and say, next month, we will talk about comp plan. So at that meeting, everybody had a chance to have input and say, no, don't do it or do it. If it was a smaller issue, then we would put it on the agenda.
Yeah, and I think that's definitely an option. But I, the reason why I'm not a huge fan of that approach is you are dealing, so a, a planning commission is reliant upon the resources of its staff.
Right.
In part, you know? So for example, someone could come forward and say, okay, I want to deal with the comp plan. But you could have, you, you could have 15 quasi judicial permits or hearings coming that, coming up. Or you could have.
And that's why we went before the meeting to the planner. Because you're right, this meeting has got too much on it already that is mandatory for us to do, so we can't do it now.
Yeah.
If it was a smaller issue that could fit into the schedule, it would decided to put it on the schedule. Comp plan would have been one of those where we are, we are thinking about in a month, two months to bring that to the agenda and have entire input from everybody.
If, if I could just add, under the adopted section in code, when we talk about agendas, the agenda for regular and special meetings shall be prepared by the city planner. There is nothing in code that contemplates any sort of extra authority to a chair other than under parliamentary procedure, which is truly to run the meeting.
Yeah.
So right, wrong, or indifferent, that's where we're at. The, the, the purpose of the chair is to, to run the meeting. And in our parley training, we'll get into that, so.
But, but with that definition, then the planner has complete absolute power with the program agenda.
But the duties, exactly. I think the intent is for, with the commission, for the planner to set the agenda. But the council, I mean, the commission has its duties under the code. So if your, if your planner is not getting these duties addressed on the code, then that becomes a legal issue, right? So and that becomes an issue where it's, hey, we're not getting these done. And, and we would hope that it would just go to the planner, we need this on our agenda. And that is what I thought you were sort of saying, is that that was how you did that before. And so I think most of the time that'll probably work, right? You bring up the issue and the commission, and the planner will say, oh yeah, we need to talk about these things, right? But there isn't, what, what Jamie is saying is there's no authority under the code for the commission to say, okay planner, I know you're saying that we can't do it that day, but we're going to take a vote and we're going to put our, our, I'm as the chair, we're going to put it on the agenda. Someone called, we're going to put it on the agenda and we're going to, and that is what we're saying is not, that is not anticipated by this code. And it's really not a, it's not anticipated for any commission or committee. So to the extent that was happening, I think part of it is because it happened easily, right? When you were co-chair and that issue came up, it was probably done in a way where the planner was like, we don't have time for that right now. You'd say, oh, well, we don't think we should do this right now, you know? And so there was that deference, so it never came to a head. But it doesn't mean that it wasn't an issue. But my concern with that is really resource management, you know? Because I think, and also I'm a lawyer, so I'm always thinking not about the wonderful, you know, collaborative relationship that exists, but the very, you know, combative relationship that may develop someday. And, and making sure that our laws, because that's really, we're talking about laws regarding the agenda. And the laws are designed to protect the city from the combative inefficient relationship, not the collaborative one. You know, because the collaborative one doesn't really matter if the planner is controlling the agenda because she's listening and being responsive to, you know, the input from the chair, so.
And a lot of these issues, we have to have public notice on.
That I was just thinking.
So to, a lot of these issues, we need to have public notice on. So trying to bring an amendment to a planning commission meeting to the agenda, not only doesn't give the staff time to respond, we may not have the proper public notice for that.
But, but yeah, but the process I explained, it wasn't, I walk in on Monday and say, put this on the agenda. I mean, that's why the planner was involved because the planner know this has to go out to the public so many days ahead of time. So if I come in on Monday, it's not going to make the agenda. I'm, I'm just concerned, what I'm hearing is though, is that the planner has a hundred percent authority of agenda and we have no authority until we get here and find out what the agenda is going to be.
Well, you have what's on the agenda, I mean, the agenda will be noticed a week before.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, but.
So I do think that what, I mean, Cindy and I have talked about this a little bit. Where you, where you want to go is when you become a planning commissioner, you're handed a train, training materials and all of this is scheduled. And you're also handed a, here, this is when we usually.
Yes.
You know, this is, we usually decide, we talk about the comp plan, you know, upper fifth year. That means that the big comp plan discussion and an RFP and all of that's coming in ex date. We talk about this annually. Right now, we've been doing that in June. If that's a problem for you, like we'll start having that discussion three months before for scheduling. So that's all there. But what the code does, and I respect, I, I understand where you're coming from. But it is designed to ensure that the individual commission, the commission members are not given, they don't have the authority to put things and take things off the agenda.
I agree with that.
And that is, you know, but I do think, that said, if these duties aren't being performed, then it's really important that the commission have a voice and say, this isn't happening. So you have to bring this to us. And I think that transcends the authority in the planner and enters the realm of legal mandates under your code, right? And so that's when the planner would likely get a call from me saying, you know, well, that's illegal, so you probably want to listen to your commission member. So where, so when you're looking at where to say that, I think one is sharing it, sharing comments with your chair and the chair is watching that and sharing it with the planner. But also in your comments, after, you know, your comments in the meetings, you know? It's, it's appropriate to say, I'm looking forward, I, we haven't done anything on our comp plan in a while and I'm really looking forward to that process and I haven't seen anything. I'm hoping the planner can let us know what that's going to look like this year, you know? That kind of thing, absolutely appropriate.
So I have an idea with this, it's something that I'd like to propose to you. And this is what I had wanted all along, this is yours. I'm here to help. So I'd like to, for the first time, I mean, will we be, we will be doing the comp plan right now, but this is actually a good time to look for the future. And we'll sit down, we'll put it as an agenda item and say, I want to do, and I really like that idea. Hey, we know in November, kind of like when you do goals and initiatives, though that's in December. And that's when we talk about it at the council. We have a clear calendar, but you direct it. So that then I'm able, well, we're all able to, as these hearings come forward, we're able to say, well, that's, you know, we're going to have to actually have this here, get it on the agenda at the appropriate time. But this, I'd like it to be directed by you and then following the code.
And that is totally, that's very appropriate. If the planner in their authority is going to engage you in that process, that is completely appropriate.
But what Cindy has said is absolutely correct. I think the part that's missing or not clearly understood is how does a commissioner or the body get things put on the agenda?
You do not.
That has.
You do not get things put on the agenda as individual commissioners.
It has to be as a whole.
I'm sorry, but yes, you do not. That doesn't mean that you can't make recommendations about things you might want to see on the agenda. And it sounds like, you know, it sounds like Cindy really wants to, and it might, and it doesn't mean that you don't make a comment or point out that something that is, that is within your duties has not come onto the agenda. But what you don't do as a commissioner is have the authority to place something on the agenda. Then that is, the only body that that authority, where that authority exists is the council. And the reason why is they are, it's really that elected piece that gives them a statutory right to make, to propose laws, to put those laws out there. Now that doesn't, again, it doesn't mean you don't have a lot of authority to do, to get that, you know?
And do you want to, would it help? I mean, I don't want to delay things we got along, but would it help to do some examples? So what's an example that, if anybody, what does somebody want on the agenda? I don't know, give an example.
Downtown districting.
And so where does that fit in to your duties?
You ask me one question now.
So we're going to flip over.
It's mentioned in the comp plan.
Yeah.
Yes.
And is it?
It's, it would be a rezone, or it would be a, you'd be amending your zoning district, right? That's why a downtown overlay district is a.
It would be amending Title 16, I don't know how deep 16. So that's within your scope, right? Because you can make a, where it falls, to me, that's well within your scope. But when you come up with this planning document, that's where I hope that would be. In August.
Yeah, but I'm, but I'm saying, I come to the meeting and I haven't heard about the downtown districting plan for.
Yes, sir.
How do I, uh, committee direct Cindy to find a place to put that on the agenda?
You say, I haven't seen it on here in a long time.
She ignores it.
She, then she.
No, no, I'm saying, yeah, like, she did.
Let's say she ignores it, she put it in that drawer, you know, and ignored it.
If I remember Robert's Rules of Orders correctly, we would do a memo, memo, the member commissioner, would do a memo to the chair and to the planner requesting an item be placed on the agenda and that's not what's done here.
That's not, that's not Roberts, but that's okay. But so I think it's a balance, you know? If you read code when we talk about council, it's clear. One, I, verbatim, a council member may sponsor any ordinance, resolution or any other action item they wish to put on. Clear, clear as mud, no. Very clear. And then it even goes on to discussion items that requires two council members. Two council members have to request a discussion item. So it's not in your code. Sounds like probably based on statute, it's not in your code.
Right.
And it is what it is.
Right, so I guess all of us are asking, it's not in code. And right now, I, and there's, working with us well. What if she's not here tomorrow and there's somebody else here? Who takes a different stance on this?
I guess you go find a council member. No, seriously.
And I, I do have one thing to say.
That is exactly right. Like, and it would be if you were like, hey.
I want this water park.
Yeah, you could come, you could come to council and you can say, hey, I am a commission member and my, one of my most important duties that we have is to amend these. And I am, this downtown overlay district needs a hard look. And we have brought it up and the planner will not put it on the, on the agenda. And I am very frustrated. And so then the next thing you know, the council might put a resolution and then it's going to, you know, it's going to, you know, so, so it is, but the agenda is controlled.
You and you got it on.
And I don't think that that is going to happen because I think generally speaking, a planner will respond.
We're not saying she wouldn't, we're just saying if.
Right, so the if is, that's the, and it's, and it may be frustrating because you want to take, but you can think about, think about this. So right now, let's say the planning commission right now said, we want to take on downtown overlay district. Now, the downtown overlay district is an area of the Title 16 rewrite that has not been touched, right? I mean, it's been some.
I picked that one.
Right, so it hasn't been touched. And it's, and it hasn't been touched in part because when reviewing it, it's, is this even something that is, you know, that the city wants to preserve? That wants to keep this downtown overlay district in light of, and the comp plan needs to inform with that kind of, that kind of massive substantive change to zoning, you know, is definitely outside my purview. So it's, and it's well within yours, right? So that discussion needs to happen. But let's say a commission said, we want to do it now. We've got people coming in all the time saying this is a problem. So you have a project that will take tens of thousands of dollars to do. We're in the middle of a Title 16 rewrite. And a commission, and the commission ultimately decides that they're going to take this up, which is going to demand a ton of attorney time. It's going to have implications for council time, right? They're at least going to have to take it up and either reject it. It could be confusing given that you have this Title 16 coming. And that is what I, that's what I believe the reason why commissions aren't given that expansive authority when it comes to putting things on the agenda. You have your comments to make comment, you know, you make, you have a comment period and you have public notice. And you also have these mandated issues that are coming into the, on the agenda because the quasi judicial matters have to come onto the agenda, right? And so.
Permits.
And I mean, the training, but that's the problem. We got a big DOT project going through downtown.
Yeah.
And I don't see the correlation between the comp plan, the downtown overlay and the big project that's going through downtown, going to change the way streets are laid out and going to change people, front of their buildings and stuff, all that. But we have this problem, we doing this in this silo and we doing this in this silo. But the three of those plans need to be walking hand in hand. And, but you're telling me I don't have the ability to get the council to vote on, to let's look at this in a big picture.
You have the duties laid out here, so you could say.
That would be in E.
Yeah, so I think.
That would be E.
And especially after what I was reading on 35. Because 35 clearly states that, and it, I mean, I won't even go into it. Well, like you said, you wanted to look at that.
I need to, I need to read the statute and see what that anticipates. But that is, if that is the reason, one of the things you want to look at with E and we want to understand what we, what you can do, like that would be a time where you're saying to the planner, you need to execute, execute. saying to the planner, you need to execute, exercise our authority under subsection E and the planner will need to get that on there, not because she has a duty to get that on the agenda, because again, that council, a commission, but because you have a duty to exercise your.
Yes.
Well, we have a duty of the public, we're supposed to be the protector, right?
Right, and you have.
See what's going on in downtown.
Right, and you have to perform these provisions, you have to provide, perform these roles. So understanding when you have to, and so we do want to get to the place where if there is a contract that triggers a duty by the commission, that the commission doesn't have to put something on an agenda, the commission members are simply responding to one that's already there and so that's.
A duty then? Is that what we?
No, it would be on your regular agenda. So I think it's just a matter of, and I feel like, I feel like a little bit, like, I want to make sure, I don't want to give you information without reading the statute, looking at what is out there, the exact contract, what, like, what is not coming before council and then if we are, or, sorry, the commission, if we're missing a step, if that needs to be here, making sure that not only that, that we get that corrected for now, but the real, the real goal would be to make sure that it's self-executing, it happens and it lands on your agenda because it also influences the agenda for the council. Because it takes time, the commission, when it has a role to play, needs time to play the role and then that, and there's a specific timeframe in which all the rules are played. So the only thing that, so that is different. So when you look at your duties, we're not taking away from those, what we're saying is the agenda's under the control of the planner for a reason, so.
One of the problems we have right now with this downtown couplet project is the fact that the downtown overlay had not been looked at for so many years, but it's playing a very major piece in the actual design and impleta, impli.
Implementation.
Thank you. Of this, of this couplet that's coming. And so not having taken care of that business and not suspending it prior to the design of this couplet that's coming up has, I think, affected the project and the city in a very negative way. So that's just one of the problems, but to get something on the agenda, an email to the planner, we have our comment period at the end of our meeting to make, on public record, that we would like something on the agenda and then they have to be given time to take the necessary steps to see if it's even viable to put on the agenda.
Yeah, and they may decide not to put it on the agenda. And so that is just, yeah, I mean, just, but yes, you should do all of those things. You should tell the planner when you think you want something on the agenda, but I, it's really important that the commissioners don't feel, you know, like, I think a lot of times the planner might be like, you know, that's, we're going to, I'm not going to put that resolution on the agenda for, it's outside the scope of the commission's, you know, role or it'll keep us here till midnight and I really, because that's the other thing, the other thing, the reason why they put that power in the planner is because you're appointed members, which means you are, the need to respect the time.
Yes.
Of every other person and the commitment made, which is within these things, you know, so it's, that's the balance. So I, I think you're right. If you, if something is not on the agenda that you want to see on the agenda, say it in your comments and hopefully the planner is responsive and listening and either it finds an agenda at some point for it to go on, points out on the, where it is on the agenda, puts it on the agenda, or, you know, or explains why that's not going to happen.
But she's not obligated to explain.
She is not, no, no. But when a planning commission, I think, is upset with a planner that doesn't put things on the agenda ever that they want to talk about, that person doesn't usually.
It doesn't last very long.
Yeah, like, I mean, it's, you know, that's part of the process, just, you know, there are.
Because I'm in an appointed position as well.
And we can move on, but the planner is busy, she's got a thousand things going, unfortunately, while still is growing, which.
Unfortunately.
No, unfortunately, is growing, so that, so daily she's got a thousand things on her plate and so I don't, it could not be a case of her intentionally ignoring something, but just she's got so many things coming across her desk and she's one planner, she doesn't have a.
She has help now.
She doesn't have a co-planner and a co-planner.
She does.
Yeah, but if she doesn't have those things, she may not have the resources to do the thing that you're seeking for her to put on the agenda.
Because it's not only time, it's financial.
Yes, and it impacts the budget and it impacts, yes.
Attorney is dealing with financial.
Oh, no, she doesn't pay.
And, and the agenda is shared with a lot of quasi judicial matters.
Adding extra duties to the clerk is a use of resources, so.
Right, exactly, okay, so let's move through.
One last thing and I promise, so Commissioner Langill was very frustrated at first because she had some questions and it was literally about every single one of these things.
Yeah.
I said, stand down, stand, hold tight, because I want to know too, I know every single one of you wants to know because knowledge is power and that's why, that's why we waited because it wasn't clear. And we want it to be clear for everybody and how everybody will know, this is how we do it, these are the rules, these are the, and I couldn't make that interpretation because it had, it had never been done before. So now we know, and now especially going forward when we look at all of these, you will look at them and say, you know, with the exception of a capital improvement, or not a capital improvement, a construction project that would maybe come out of the blue or like the downtown, all of a sudden something happens, you'll have it, you'll know, and now we know how to get things on the agenda too. So thank you for your patience.
Sometimes it.
Yeah.
I apologize for that, but, but this brings up, we all recognize that Cindy has been out there on an island all by herself and we appreciate all the work she's done, but I'm looking at this new code and it says the city's supposed to be giving her a staff liaison, is that what, proper, where is it?
No, she is your staff liaison. She is your staff liaison and so she is.
She is, the planner is.
Yes. She's the staff liaison to the commission.
Our body's liaison.
Ms. Langill, can you, where are you? Just so I can keep up.
Oh, this is in the other one, I'm sorry.
Okay, let's look at it together.
Serial twenty-four, twenty-three.
Yep.
Page eight, eleven.
Staff liaison, the mayor shall designate an employee to serve as a staff liaison to each commission.
Eight, I don't know.
Eight of eleven.
Eight of eleven.
Yep, where I'm, I'm right with her, two fifty-eight, one hundred. A, staff liaison, the mayor shall designate an employee to serve as staff liaison to each commission. The city planner is the staff liaison to the planning commission, the recreational services director is the staff liaison to the Parks and Rec Commission and the, and the Public Works Director is liaison to the Airport Advisory Commission.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And again, so you can, you'll make recommendations, so after all this discussion, like, what you'll do is you'll make recommendations to your planner and she will either put them on the agenda or if she's not putting them on the agenda and they relate to your duties, right, and especially if they relate to your, the duties that you have to perform, you want to make sure, you can elevate that, you can bring it to council, you can send an email to the clerk, you know, saying, I would like the attorney to look into this or I don't understand why we're not complying with our duties, so that you have, so the clerk has the ultimate sort of parliamentarian and the clerk's role for the entire city, right? We think about the clerk's role for the council, but the clerk has a role for the entire city that it would have put her in a position to say, there is these duties and most likely she would call me and say, what do we do? And I'd call Cindy and say, you gotta get it on the agenda, right? Like, this is one of their duties and either it's time sensitive, so if we don't do it now, it won't be done and then would there be a violation, or it's not time sensitive, but they, we're within a year and they haven't done it. And so then it's time sensitive for the year or whatever that piece, whatever that looks like. So that's, so that sort of answers that question. It's not a perfect answer, again, but I think it'll, I think what, if Cindy does what she plans on doing, which is coordinating with the clerk's office based on council schedule and its agenda, which is another reason why, you know, the planner is given that discretion because it all has to be coordinated, then I think you'll have a better idea of what's coming, you'll be able to go through and say, yep, all these things are planned and when something doesn't happen, you'll be able to hold her accountable because you'll have your sort of timeline of when things, your calendar of when to expect certain discussions. The one thing that that's not going to apply to, of course, is your quasi judicial proceedings, but when those don't come up when they're supposed to, you will hear about it, I promise. So that is, but that is something that's important, you know, those violations and making sure that's happening when it's supposed to happen, of course. So make recommendations to council on proposed rezoning, except as otherwise provided in this code. That is what, quasi judicial or legislative?
I don't even know where we are now.
Okay, so I'm going through the duties, I am using, I'm on page five of ten, I'm using your new orders.
Five of ten, got it.
Yes. So make recommendations to council on proposed rezoning.
Legislative?
Right, oh, ding ding ding, winner winner chicken dinner, that's the hard one, yeah. Hear and decide permit applications, including but not limited to, applications for variances, conditional use permits and other approvals required by the land developer. Quasi judicial, great, good job, guys, all right. Hear and decide appeal of permit decisions made by the city planner.
Quasi judicial.
Quasi judicial. Investigate and prepare recommendations regarding a simple, a capital improvement program and the compliance of that program with the comp plan.
Legislative.
Hard one, yes, legislative, that's right, legislative, but a difficult one. So that'll be one that, you know, Cindy will likely have a plan for you on, when you're, when you're doing that and that will be informed mostly by the council's plan. Investigate, prepare reports on the availability of public lands for city purposes.
It wants to be legislative.
Yeah, legislative, and this is another one, you can put a star next to, this is one we need to pay attention, what's your role, when does it get played out? Is it just something you do every ten years or is it something that you do every year? You know, right? Then how does that play out and what?
Twice a week.
And how do we investigate?
Yes, and how do, and what does an investigation look like? And, and so the planner will inform a lot of that, right? Because, and you as a commission, and I think that's the other piece, and I didn't really mention that, you as a commission, the planner will afford the agenda items, but you as the commission will make some decisions regarding what steps you're taking, what does investigation look like for you? So it's just finding the time to put, the appropriate time, especially with Title 16 changing, to further define any of these roles that you play.
So one of the council's goals or initiatives that they just adopted was to, Kathy, correct me if I'm wrong, investigate a new potential of a new city hall. And I'm paraphrasing, so how, does that fit to J, should the commission have a role in that?
I don't know that it goes to a specific property. I think it's more of this, this concept that the planning commission is looking at the plans of the city, you know, and the layout of the, so what I, the way I see it often played out in a, what I call a land allocation plan, that's a plan that a lot of communities will adopt annually that will say, here's all our property and this is what property's available for lease and this is what's available for sale. And it's really a process that council will go through, but the planning commission will have a role, will basically go through almost the same process and look at those properties as well and so, or have some role in that process. But we don't have that sort of process here. I think this was, in essence, these provisions which have been around, you know, they kind of, they give you, they give you the authority, but they don't give you a lot of direction on how to execute it, so, and that's not bad, you know, it's not bad to have leeway, it's just how that's executed will depend on how this body and the planner work together.
And one thing that.
What resources you have and what, what quasi judicial proceedings are dominating your, how many of them and, you know, what's, what, those are going to take precedent on your routine agenda, right? And so all of these things are important and you need to do them, but you have very specific obligations to each of those permit holders and the timeframe in which you must.
But if a new city hall location affects the downtown overlay plan in a significant way, we wouldn't have a reason to weigh in on that process. Because the downtown overlay has been approved, we make a recommendation, council said, yes, that looked good, and now they make another decision that affects that plan.
Right, and I think if you were like, I want to take this plan up, then I think you would go to the planner and say, we want to amend the comp plan.
Yeah, do it.
You know, and then, and then the planner would have to make a determination and it might not come on this next agenda, but maybe it will come on the next one or maybe it will come with, okay, I'm putting it on the agenda, but I'm going to, you know, give the commission a memo saying, I don't think we should delve into this right now, right? Because of X, Y, and Z. Or she might just say, not right now, we've got all of these things. I, I think that, but it's, bring it up and see what happens. I think it's one of these things, like, I know you don't like her having that power and I know it's not personal to the planner, I know it's that you're trying to protect your duties. But I think the reality is, your duties are protected because they're, you're obligated by law. If you bring up something that you, that's within your scope, you know, then talk to the planner and see if it falls on the agenda or if she puts it on the agenda, if she refuses to put it on the agenda, I'd bring it up with council, I'd bring it up in your, in your comments, you know, and bring it up if you think that it's going to lead to a violation of one of these duties, you're not going to be able to meet your obligation, you send an email to the clerk saying that I think the city attorney needs to weigh in.
And do you recommend that, so let's say this was happening right now and we weren't having this meeting, at the next meeting and you, when would he do that? Would he say maybe during comments, planner, I would like you to, or, or body, would you consider this?
Yeah, or he could call you or, I mean, he could do it in his comments, his commission comments, he can do it after, he can, he can raise it at any time, a member can raise, can ask the question.
I don't, if I may.
So do not.
I'm not sure you're, so as I'm hearing you and think, I don't think that an email to the planner and saying it that the dais is going to carry any more weight.
Yeah.
Other than if you say it at the dais, it's, it's live streamed and it's, it's recorded.
Right, and somebody's going to hear it and you're not the only one that wants to do it.
Same thing with an email, I mean, that's a public record, it's documented, right? It's email, so I just.
Yeah.
Whether you get action or not.
Yeah, I think that the, the reason why I say make a public, or make a comment is because another commission member might be like, I also want that. And another commissioner might be like, I also want that. And so you get that and I can't do that over email, right? Because of the Open Meetings Act. So you're not sending a reply all email that has all the commissioners on it. And you will know that very well after we move on, on our training, but, yeah, so we're not going to, so that is sort of the, you know, we want to make sure we get through those provisions and if we don't, it's in your book. So all this is important, you know, and we'll use our time how it's needed.
Okay, so then is it, I'm still getting wrapped around, under commissioner comments, can we request consensus, seeking consensus of the members? No?
No, so this is, when you're making your comments, they're comments and so they cannot, they're not a conversation, that's what I tell people. So you don't have a conversation during comments, just like you don't have a conversation with the public during your comments. It's your opportunity to provide comments, so you can say, I really appreciated the comments made by so and so. So you can do that, you can use it as a time to reflect back, but it's not going to be a conversation, you don't ask questions and you don't, and so with the planner, I think you just say, I really would like to see that on an agenda, you know, and you don't add, and if another commissioner wants to make a comment, then they can make a comment, but you can't seek action during comments. So it's just sort of a way to flag comments in an email, you can say, I really want to see this on the agenda. The only difference is, as Jamie pointed out, is that, you know, I think the planner is likely to respond to both in the same way. I, I expect that both Cindy and every planner is actually going to, I have not worked with a planner that has actively and intentionally ignored the desires of the commission they serve. You know, they may not have thought to put something on or prioritized it, there might have been things like that happen sometimes, everybody's really busy, but if you actively want something that you, that's within your duty to request, you'll generally find it coming before you. The question is, will it be this agenda or the next agenda, right? Or when will it? And it, so that's really.
I have one last thing as we, I know we'll, we'll talk about specifically like with the construction projects, but when we do have that discussion and one of the things I saw immediately, I feel that other departments have taken over some things that maybe had been either supposed to be. been either supposed to be done in this department, and, but I think we're going to find, we'll need to find out how, what that role is and what that looks like, and then what do we do if they truly are the ones who are supposed to be having, like for example, capital improvements projects? How do you investigate if you don't have, you know, these are the things that I would like to look at a bigger picture, because it's not clearly defined on each of these. Who does what?
I think that's process.
Yes.
That is outside of the, that's process.
Yeah, I agree. We'll figure that out, and figuring out, and you'll delegate your-
If you kept that in the top of your mind, because it may come up in questions at the next meeting, is what I'm, I have a feeling, yes?
Yes, I think we'll come up, you know, we'll come up with a procedure or process to make sure that, and then getting in front of the process is always the most important thing, I think, for, in my-
Because if-
But we only get there when we run into the issue, right? And that's how, when we run into the need for it, and, and so that's, that's all, I think, exciting things to look forward to, you know, is getting that process dialed in.
Thank you.
So the other thing is, at the request of the mayor council, investigate and prepare reports for the location and establishment of public facilities. So that one, that one very clearly is triggered by a request, right, by the mayor council. So at least that one we don't have to worry about. Because, I mean, it'll be clear, we will have the trigger and then we will move forward. But what do you think that is, quasi judicial or legislative?
Legislative.
Yes, legislative. All right. Okay, so we have, so now we've gone through, did you all write, did you take notes, your quasi judicial legislative on your duties? Okay, so, but it wasn't as easy, it's not as, it's not necessarily that easy, it takes a minute, you know, and the more you do it, the easier it'll get. So, some of the not so basics of the Open Meetings Act, and we didn't talk about a lot of the basics, so I'm going to focus on that for just a second, right? Because I think that is very important. So the Open Meetings Act applies when three, it basically applies to any and all public meetings of a government body. We talked about the fact that you are a, a government body to which it applies, right? And that it doesn't apply in some situations, like if you go to AML or AMA, the municipal league, that is not, that is exempt from the Open Meetings Act, so any kind of training, education-based.
For the council, if you go, do not congregate and do not talk about city business.
Yeah, that's true.
You're there just for training.
That's true.
Don't discuss how that training affects a decision you're empowered to make. So make new friends.
Yes, enjoy yourself and take a break, because yes, you are not, that's an excellent point, because it is very easy to find yourself in the halls of, you know, of a training session and just be like, well, what, how does this apply to X? You know, so that is, that is something to note. And so, the one thing, so here are, here are some notes, I'm trying to think of their, well, we need to talk about consecutive sessions a little bit, but we'll do that in a minute. So actual notice cures defects in formal, in formal notice. So this is one of those things, the Open Meetings Act is not trying to be as scary as it is. It's trying to give you lots of outs. You can cure it, then you haven't even violated me, says the Open Meetings Act, right? I actually am paying attention to what notice people have, because, and not just what notice you gave, right? And so actual notice can cure that defect. That's important to notice or to realize, because you're dealing, you're going to be dealing with a lot of notice provisions as a commission especially, and so just keeping that in mind is, is helpful. A member of a body accused of the OMA can't be sued in their personal capacity. So this is important, but I have, but there is a caveat to this, which is, Wassila has a code of ethics. And so violations of the code of ethics can be, you can be sanctioned, you can face consequences. Now, that is not court action, but that is something to pay attention to, and it's one of the reasons why a lot of communities have a code of ethics, for two reasons. One, to be able to hold its elected and appointed members and its elected, or its, its officials, like the clerk and me, you know, and that, to hold us accountable, but also to help us understand, like to have clear rules that tell us what we can and cannot do, and further to provide protections, like advisory opinions, so you can get protection from your act by seeking help early on. So that's one, why you see codes of ethics out there. But, and, and people only have 180 days to sue under the Open Meetings Act, which is not a rule that I want you to be like, well, you know?
179.
Say 179.
I can cure it and it's day 179, no.
Exactly. Yes, that's exactly what we want to avoid. So, so for you guys, it's three, right? Three members? And it doesn't matter if it's pre-arranged or spontaneous, so if you all go to a wedding and you're hanging out and you never expected to be there or talk, and you just happen to get together and start talking about an issue, that's still an Open Meetings Act violation. So it's important to remember that, it's not just when you actually choose to get together to, it's not just a deliberate meeting. And really, what are the topics? So let's say you're talking about the wedding dress of the bride. Totally okay. Now, we'll talk about the appearance of impropriety in a moment, right? But in general, yes, if you, it needs to be a subject matter on which you are authorized to act. So it's city business, but it's something, it's beyond that, it's something you're authorized to act on.
So we can talk about the agenda.
So if you wanted to talk about-
The agenda, you're not authorized to act on that.
City attorney, no.
Yes, please do not, you let it go. Let's say that you wanted to talk about, I'm trying to think of something that's just fully outside the scope of the planning commission's authority, but the truth is, land use touches on so much, you know, but let's say you wanted to talk about-
Building a new city hall.
Yeah, what if we want to talk about that?
Yeah, like a proposition to build a city hall, right? Now, the problem is, where's it being built? Are you going to possibly be able to talk about amendments to the comprehensive plan that would include the district in which the city hall is built and therefore have, so-
That would be a violation.
Yes, that would be a violation. And so generally, it would have to be something, you know, we're going to talk about the duties of the library director, right? You guys start talking about the duties of the library director, and I think I can defend that case, you know, we are not, we don't have a violation. Right? So, but, and it's, but it's one of these things, I want you to understand the laws, not so that you feel empowered to push the limit, but so that you, as you understand it, it helps you, it helps you really understand the parts you, you know, you need to know. We go a little micro so that your macro is like-
So I wonder if this is a violation, you guys? What if we're at a wedding, and I walk up and I say, what are they doing with the old library?
Yeah.
Because it's, well, I'm driving, I drove, this is true, I drove by the other night, it was all lit up, and I'm like, what is even in there? And so what if I ask that question? Is that a violation?
I don't know, it depends on what, what comes up on your agenda next. And that really is, I mean, in a way, so for, and by that, I mean, if it's not directly a, I can go down the list and see what your authority, yes, but let's say the next thing is the district that, a rezone that impacts the library and its use is up, an application, a rezone application on your next agenda.
We don't know, so-
You didn't know that.
Violated accident.
You just talked about all of these things, and now you think about it, you're like, wow, I think that is something that, now, we would defend if that came up in court, we'd argue that is, that discussion was narrow, and it was outside the scope of what they're allowed to act on. Yes, and then, and then the other side would say, who are you kidding? This is the planning commission. If it happens on property within the city of Wassila, they have authority, they should anticipate, they should know that they can't talk about the use of anything within the boundaries of the city outside a public meeting, right? And they might win, you know, so, and it would, and you know what it would turn on more than anything? Did you cure, did you say, oh my gosh, we had this conversation, we did not think that this was a violation when we had the conversation, this just came up, we really need to disclose that we were talking about the use of the library at this point.
The old library.
The old library, and that, and that might be impacted by your rezone application, you know, and so that would be a discussion, right? And rezone is not a great example, because that's a legislative, so it would have to be their variance or conditional use permit, so see, then I do it, but the rezone is, you know, but it's a great example of an Open Meetings Act violation, I guess, because it doesn't matter, sorry, if it's legislative or quasi judicial, it just wouldn't, so anyway, it doesn't matter whether it's quasi judicial or legislative, when you have those discussions, we want to consider the implications long term.
So what if you want to complain about Church Road and the potholes? Is that a violation?
I don't think, so I think the question for you guys would be, what is your authority? You know, because, right?
I mean, it's a road, right?
Right, and, and there are some provisions in Title 16 that require paving of certain driveways, and maybe-
Church Road is paved by the state, so it wouldn't affect us.
Yep, so you would say, so that would, you would say, oh, no, we don't-
That's where I, where I was going with that.
But we, but you approve state projects.
Oh, Jesus.
See?
How about you're a citizen of Wassila or the community, and you hop on the Matt Su Borough Problem Reporter, and you are a citizen DeYoung, and you report, please fix the potholes on Church Road? You don't, why would you need to talk to your other fellow commission members about fixing the pothole on Church Road?
You wouldn't, because it's ridiculous. They're horrible.
I mean, just saying.
I'm not allowed to do that, or is that- Oh, absolutely, you still retain your, your free speech, your rights to free speech, yes, but you do, but it is a good question in the sense that, what if you said, hello, I'm Planning Commissioner DeYoung, and I wanted to talk to everybody about the potholes on Church Road, and I really think that we need to tackle those potholes, is that okay?
No.
No, so under the code of ethics.
Well, I was wondering even, as being DeYoung on the, let's just say Facebook or whatever, complaining about the pothole might be an ethics violation if they, you know, people knew you were on the commission.
And I think it's more how you're holding yourself out. So you have a right to say things, and, you know, and as long as they're not speaking as a, through your capacity as a commissioner, then that is okay. You know, you can say whatever you want to say, I mean, we, I mean, within the realms of protected speech, you know, we are not, we- Do we, isn't the boss of you? You know, not in that realm, you know, and so then, or anyone, and the city of Wassila is very careful to make sure they are protecting, you know, and then they are not overstepping, and they are allowing especially appointed commission members, you know, this is not, the goal is not to stop you from having the conversations, it is to stop you from having them together, you know, outside the public realm.
If you put yourself out as a commissioner, you, as a private citizen, you can talk about anything.
Right.
Not with these people.
Exactly, and, and you have to pay attention to who's around you, because sometimes you'll be like, okay, well, I went and I was talking about the pothill, the pot, um, thank you, potholes on Church Road, and, you know, and I happened to be in the coffee shop, and actually, you know, two of my fellow commissioners came in, and I wasn't talking to them, but somebody else, you know, and you get overheard, and I don't want to be in the position of explaining exactly how many feet were between you and who was actually having a conversation and who wasn't. So this is where your OMA judgment comes into play, and that's really what Jamie is getting at. The point of the Open Meetings Act is to stop that gross feeling that the public has when they sit in a room and it looks like you already know what you're going to do, right? And it is an awful feeling for members of the public who are coming out on something they're very passionate about, they prepared all of these things, there's nothing that is more, that's going to lose your, their trust more than like weeks across, but yeah, like this sort of, I know you guys, and, and the thing is, no one's as good at it as they think they are. So context gets left out, you know, you make a presentation and it's like, how did he know that she was going to say that? How did, well, you wouldn't have known that if that, you know, and so it comes out, and at first sometimes it's just a feeling, and it's just, oh, these two commission members are really good friends, and they happened to run into this other commission, but it before long, it completely, it's degenerative, is my, you know, feeling, and that's on a council and commission level. So that is what the Open Meetings Act is trying to get in front of. They want you to make the sausage with the public.
Did you cover when that kicks in, whether it's two members, three members, four members?
So it's a, it's at four or a majority, whichever is less, so for you it's three. Now, I think, I think I was-
Two of us could get together and talk about anything on the agenda.
Yes.
Caution, I mean-
Always makes me-
You, you, under the law, yes, you can, but we'll get into this later, caution, you may forget you have that, and inadvertently you're like, oh, hey darling, I say about the coffee shop, what do you think about this? And you maybe forget you and Todd talked about it, Commissioner Stafford, and so before you know it, you don't-
Now you've gotten three involved, yeah.
You have three.
Whether it's all at the same time.
And that's the violation I've seen, where I intentionally go to Todd.
Just be careful.
And that's one, that's two people I haven't violated, and now I go to David and talk about, I don't tell anybody that we talked over here.
Yep, and that is a violation, yeah. And it, and it ultimately, and that is the one that ends up giving people the most trouble, you know, and you're small, you're such a small commission, it's harder for you guys in the sense, because it doesn't take much before you've tipped into a violation. You know, so-
And then I'll stop, another one of my favorites is, hey, Commissioner Stafford, what do you think about this? Well, you and I have a friend, we have a third-person friend in the conversation, and then I don't realize she's friends with Mr. Young, and she goes, hey, Mr. Young, I was just talking to Commissioner Brown and Commissioner Stafford, and they really feel passionate about this. Is that a serial meeting?
Right, and everybody knows exactly how everybody-
And I've witnessed that where certain officials use friends to pass messages.
Oh, yeah, I've seen that too. That's why I was checking.
Strong ethical violation.
Yes.
Well, I think it's actually-
Ethics is violated.
It's like we need a code of-
We have one. And serial communications, we do have the court suggesting that that is going to be a violation, you know, so I would, you know, I would say, strong ethical concerns and flat-out legal, you know, express legal concerns from my perspective. And I think this also goes back to that OMA judgment we talked about, it's not just, we want you to develop it not just because it helps, like it helps figure out the right thing probably to do in the situations that aren't clear, right? You're like, I probably think, I know what I'm doing. It's more intent, you know, so when we're balancing what the consequence of your decision is, intent and purpose is there, and if you intend to violate the Open Meetings Act, which what does that mean? Do you intend to make a decision without the public there? Are you trying to get to an answer without them being a part of the conversation? You know, the cure is going to have to be a lot bigger in that case, and if you have a violation, the consequence might be voiding the act that you took, you know, so that balancing act that the court is going to do to determine what the consequences of a violation are, you're going to throw that out of whack and it's going to be against your interests, so that's another reason.
And that's where we started this conversation, I said, when a citizen meets me on the street and want to talk about a specific issue, I refuse to have that conversation, because I don't know-
You don't know who they know.
-what their ideals and who they've talked to ahead of me, so if you don't have that conversation, you will never violate.
Exactly.
And when do you identify yourself as a planning commission, commissioner?
Well, you can say, I'm, I mean, it's, you're welcome to say, I'm a planning commissioner, but this is my personal viewpoint, like this has nothing to do with my role as a planner, I mean, or a planning commissioner. You can say that, you know?
Your point is going to spill over into-
Say if we go before the council, do we identify ourselves as a planning commissioner without having the commission approving or us taking that subject to the council?
I generally recommend against it, if you have somebody come, you know, you, like you can send a representative from the planning commission, I think the chair usually goes, but I think that, you know, can be, you guys can figure out what sort of process you want for that, and then that, that's the update, but that should be decided by the commission, and who provides the update.
You can go to that meeting and speak as, like I have as chair towards legislation, or you can go and speak as a private person. And so we've had council members come into our meetings that spoke to us not as a council member, but as a private citizen on a certain issue. So those, those are options that are available too. You have the choice to put out that you're a commissioner. You have the choice to put out that you're a commissioner or a private citizen.
Okay, and I don't want to put you on the spot, but I was listening in to the council last council member. You went up, identified yourself as the planning commissioner, chair, served blah, 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 and said you were against what was before the council. And I immediately said, did the planning commission discuss this, or is, were you talking as a citizen? And I thought, that's kind of a blurred area. Is it implied that he was speaking for the commission?
That's what I would have.
Oh, no, if he entered, if he said who he was, so we just had this at the VBR where they were speaking as VBR, and they had no right to do that, and they got us in a lot of trouble, and so you wouldn't identify yourself at that time, because they thought the whole Valley Board of Realtors, sorry, they thought the whole Board of Realtors was behind them, and we didn't have, it's about that, yeah. You don't, I would never introduce myself as a private.
If I may, through, through, yeah, through the chair to the body, so if, for what it's worth, what I trained council is on a letter. Say I have one, a, a letter, so they're, they're adamantly opposed to a DOT project. They can express that, but we have a disclaimer in the letter that says something to the effect of, these are the views of Councilmember Joe Smith, the city council has, you know, has not weighed in on this matter, no official position has been taken.
Now, is he recused then from voting later?
No, no, not, I don't know, we're not, it depends.
Yeah, I mean, there's a self-interest.
But if I have a council, I want to make that very, very clear, that I think it's okay to use your title, but you can also be very clear, this is not a position, you know, this is my personal opinion, or my, even my opinion as a coun, as a planning commissioner, but the planning commission has not weighed in on this.
Not your scent by the.
Right, you, you, you're not your scent by, yeah.
Yeah, and you're just, I think you're more, you're disclosing your title in that case, not using it, right? Disclose it, I am this, I, right, I have this role, but I am talking as a private individual. But I do think it's worth thinking about, you know, I see it happen all the time, and I think, you know, when you have a substantial financial interest, you're not allowed to participate in the discussions. It's not just a vote, and we'll talk about that later, it's the discussions, right? And the reason is, when you use your words and your voice, it's persuasive just as much as it is, you know, you're, you've been given these roles because of the role and the, the sort of, you know, the, the public and the city values your judgment and insight and experience and all of those things. And so as a lawyer, I don't like seeing it, I'll be honest, I don't like it. You are welcome to do it, it is your right, right? But I don't love it, because I see a person who does have a title, and therefore does have that role, and that, you know, it has that weight, yes, and that authority, and they're weighing in. It doesn't bother me so much, except for when, the time I dislike it the most is when a person weighs in in their personal capacity on something they have a substantial financial interest involving, you know, and there are some where I, I say, okay, I see, this is, you have a conditional use permit, you are the applicant, right? That right, that property right, to get that conditional use outweighs that feeling that it has, you know, that you have this sort of, this sort of, yes, this sort of persuasive effect given your role, right? Because you need the conditional use permit to do the thing that you're doing, I understand that, but I, I don't, when you come in and talk about a project for somebody else or somebody's friend, like, I don't, I don't enjoy that, I don't like to see it. I feel like the lawyer in me, all these bells go off, like, this is gonna cause, but it doesn't mean, I'm not telling you it's illegal. So I, what I would say is, think about it, you know, and if you're, really feel passionate, and you want to come and say something about a title, and we don't have a commission, I mean, so it sounds like that was before the commission had, because the chair often will speak on behalf of the commission, give an update or a report, but that's also done through the planner, so I think that's one thing too, is maybe just say, I'd like to, you know, we have strong objections to this, I would like to include those in my report to the council, you know, and then you have, then you're speaking with the commission authorities, you're updating regarding their.
Well, in, in this particular case, these two members weren't commissioners at the time. This had been discussed at a meeting.
And the objections stated, I think, if I remember right, yes.
At the city council meeting the other night?
No, this is.
No, no, this was.
This is referring to the incident you just mentioned, that I went before the city council as the chair of the planning commission and introduced myself that way. That's, that's what I was responding to, and so.
The other night, it was on, the council was considering an ordinance, and you identified yourself as the chairman, served on the commission, and you, you did say, I recommend that this be postponed or tabled, whatever the appropriate word was.
And that's his personal opinion, right?
That was quite a few meetings ago.
No, that was just.
Well, well, this is a perfect, but it's, it's a great example, like, this is the type of thing that, you know, Cindy will be working on, sort of.
I just thought it was a good example of, yeah.
I think it's great, yes, it's great to have, if you're speaking in your, and, and also, the other thing is, it's just when you get to speak, depends on, you know, so I think you spoke in public comment, which informs the fact that it was coming from you as a member of the public, but if you, but the, as the chair, that will often be under the report for the planning commissioners' report.
Well, I would almost think you would want to identify yourself, or someone will say.
Is if you are coming to testify, as an example, these two ordinances were referred. So if the planning commission had made a collective decision on whether or not to approve, or whatever, in the minutes would show it, what they were opposed to, whatnot, and, and you came as a, as the chair of the commission, and you said, I am the chair of the commission, and I'm here to talk to this ordinance, and these are the concerns that the commission collectively discussed, totally appropriate.
And that's exactly how this came down.
So, okay, but another case, say you came, I don't think there's anything wrong with wanting people to know you're a commissioner, so you, and you're also a city resident, so I, you know, while you all know me, I'm Commissioner Seals, I'm here tonight in my capacity as city resident David Seals, and I want to testify on X.
Well said.
Mm-hmm.
That is exactly, there is your playbook, that is exactly how you do it.
I think part of why he did it, the way he did, we got no warning, specifically when you spoke to these two here, we had no warning on it, so we didn't get time, that was part of our complaint, we didn't get any time to act and make a decision as a commission. We found out literally when the agenda was published, oh, by the way, we're gonna change everything about what you do, and that was part of our complaint, was, hey, could you let us know beforehand, so we can decide as a commission.
And, and in this documentation, in the beginning, we had absolutely no say in it. The council member that drafted this original did not speak to us at all, we were not involved.
Yeah, well, we.
Right, wrong, difference, so the council has, in my opinion, they can sponsor, any, a council member can sponsor an ordinance, it's a legislative hat. Any changes to these sections of code legislative hat in hindsight?
Well, and I think, I mean, I'm not even gonna say, and you guys are gonna get mad at me, so I'm gonna like brace myself.
I have fruit to throw.
I got a bottle, so go ahead.
Yeah, okay, here I go. Is it good policy to engage the commission?
Yes.
I am a lawyer, I don't make decisions on policy, but I will leave that question hanging there for you. But council.
Do what they want.
Can, has to, and has the right to, they stand up commissions and dissolve commissions, and decide what authority you have, they could limit, everything you do, they could limit it significantly beyond where they've limited it here, you know, I mean, that is their, right, and one, and cities, usually, city councils often make those decisions based on policy, like, considerations, but, you know, it could be, they could be horrible, and that's still within their, and you would, you know, that, we would hope that that would be reflected at the voting box, but, or they could be wonderful, and they can, they could derive an incredible system. We don't have control, you know, we have control only.
They could be human, and stop by and say, by the way.
Yes, you have, they are your constituents as well as they are your appointers, right?
You have the power to get rid of them.
Because once, once I re, once I got legal involved at one of the meetings, that certain council member complained that the commission wasn't there, but at that meeting, we were represented by city council. So, not a, our city attorney, so we didn't have to necessarily be there, because we were represented by the city attorney at that meeting.
Or you feel like your, your, yeah, your position had been.
Yeah.
And so, and I do think, I mean, I, again, I think that council has so much authority when it comes to drafting, what the commission does, when it meets, how much it gets paid, how many hours, what, how many, you know, all of those things. And that conversation isn't one that they have to have with the planner, with the commission, any commission or committee. If it's land use, though, if it's land use, they do have to have.
What happens if a council member wants to sponsor a, a title change to Title 16? What does that look like? What do we think that looks like, or where's the authority?
Yeah, well, I think that the, you cannot, that, that cannot pass without, now, there are some, I don't want to say that whole, like, universally, because there are some provisions that that might, you know, that might not be true, especially like for arguably if something is illegal, then we have a mandate that we have to pass it, you know, which can happen. You know, that would fall out of the commission's purview, but we all deal with that stuff if that comes up. Hopefully, that'll not, never come up, because we are rewriting. But yes, they need to come to you for your recommendation.
The legislation to pass through us before they.
Absolutely, yes.
Before they, and I was, that, that was the best thing that could have happened.
And I think that you're gonna see, I don't think council wants to, I think the discussion with those ordinances was, is it even appropriate to engage the planning commission? I'm not saying the discussion we had, but I think part of the discussion after the fact, when, when the commission, you know, the council's thinking about is, is it, is it appropriate to engage the commission when we're deciding things like their compensation? And the dates that, yeah.
Does it fall within, I'm learning too, but, you know, does it fall within A through K?
Yeah, does it fall within A through K? Are we asking them to weigh in on something that goes to the structure and organization of city government, and outside their role as our planning commissioners who, now, you're saying, but as a matter of policy, it's impacting us, we are the ones who understand these provisions better than anyone, because we live them. And that may be true as to policy, but as to law, you know, the question really isn't, so, they did not, the, the sponsor did nothing inappropriate legally, you know, and, but it did, as the individuals filling these seats and impacted by the law being made, it was well within your right to say, hey, you're making laws that impact the seats we fill, and we have, you know.
It was in his right, but in America, that's what has separated us, because, well, the law say, I didn't say I couldn't do this.
Right.
But ethics and common sense and decency, and being human should come into play if you've been elected to be a representative, and you should not hang your hat on, on that one sentence, the law said I could or couldn't do this, because there's a lot more going to it, and hopefully you want to build a relationship down the road for the time when it does require you to come, but if we have a negative relationship built up to that point, then it's not gonna go well. And that's where we are in a lot of areas in America now, and we gotta stop hanging our hat on, well, the police didn't say I couldn't do this. How about your ethics, how about your common sense, how about your humanity?
Your morals. And that is all outside the scope of this.
But it's true, she's like, well, this is, this is my purview.
Can I go back a couple steps in the discussion, ask a question? You, you talked about having conversations with members of the public. I know in last, our Monday night's meeting, when they were discussing the back, backflow preventers, one of the council members mentioned he had received several calls about this, and that's why he was asking questions. Is, if, if, is that appropriate, like, for us, if, like, when the community reaches out to us, it sounded like the council member had a conversation, not to call anybody out, but I'm just wondering, was that appropriate? Is that something I should avoid?
So it's harder for, for the commission, and this is why, so, I wish I could just give you a yes or no answer, but because you wear two hats.
You're a legislative.
Yes, so if you have any question, what hat you have on, don't take the, don't take the call, you know, and don't take the question. And if you do, and you realize, I'm pretty sure that that was my quasi judicial hat, then that's a quick call to the planner, and I disclose, you're gonna disclose it, you know, and if you're not sure, or if the planner's out, and there's, you know, it does, just say it out loud. You know, I talked to somebody, they have concerns about this, if it's affecting, you know, if it's somebody, if it's an applicant, or if it's affecting a property that you have an application on, that sort of thing. If someone calls you to complain about short-term rentals in a certain area, you know, and then you should, and you have a short-term rental permit in front of you, like, I would go so far as even to declare that. You know, I did receive a call from a member of the public complaining about short-term rentals in general in that area. I just, I have, I'm not considering that, as I go, that it's not going to sway my, my consideration. I'm, you know, of the evidence, and so that's quasi judicial, we're gonna talk about that a little bit more, but the, so your question kind of has a different answer depending on which hat. Legislative, sure, you just want to make sure you're doing it at the right time in your agenda, right? So that you're, you're moving through your, and the parliamentarian discussion will inform that. And then you, if it's quasi judicial, no.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
And so finally, as we're gonna talk.
I had one other thing, so the, the same type of example, you'd mentioned developers the other night, that you had had some developer people who were very concerned about our process. Would that have been something about the develop, with subdivisions?
I mean, I generally encourage commission members to send procedure questions to the planner.
Sounds good.
Okay, especially right now, when we have everything as, because procedure questions generally are asked by future potential applicants.
Right.
And so then, whether or not the conversation was just, you know, a short little conversation, or long and substantive, you have now engaged with an applicant in a way that you haven't engaged with whoever may be on the other side of the applicant or protesting the application, you know, so it's.
But just to clarify, I was not part of the discussion, I was sitting there, believe it or not.
Well, I mean.
And I had not said a word, but the discussion was, developers are getting ready for spring, and they're talking, and a couple of them says, well, what do we do? I did not say a word, I figured that.
Oh, this is good, yeah.
It's their business, they can figure it out.
It's all, this, these conversations are, and it's, I'm really glad you said that the other day, because it helps me to determine, because I came from a community in which we didn't have the, we were a quasi municipality, but we didn't have the quasi judicial, so there was a few different things, in that if they talked to somebody, they had to come back and say, so, I spoke with so-and-so, and had to name, unlike here, it just sounds like, no, we just abstain, or we declare to cure it. Yeah.
Right, I'm not sure.
Don't, don't follow me, it's, we're fine, yeah.
She's saying, if we're listening to somebody, or somebody asks us a question, we can either abstain, or we can just say, no, I can't talk to you. Like, we don't have to come and say, oh, I.
I had a conversation with John, who told me this, but in this state, that's not, that's not what we do here. You've told us what we do here, and so when, when you mentioned the other day, oh, I talked to developers, in my mind, I thought, oh, I need to check and see what the rules are regarding that, or if there were even any rules, like, if you spoke with a certain person, but a lot of this has already been answered, yeah.
Well, I think too, yeah, so you're, let's say you talk to a developer, and so I think you wouldn't abstain from participating, you would just disclose your expertise communication, and then we'd decide if it rises to some level where, you know, but if you have a personal, or in part, if you're, cannot be impartial, that's when you would abstain.
Okay.
Or you have a bias, or you have, you know, if you, there's some reason why, and obviously, if you have a substantial financial interest. But really with quasi judicial, the difference is, it doesn't have to be a substantial financial interest, right? If it is something that is an interest, you want to not participate. You don't want to do anything to throw off their due process, their right to fair consideration. So I would say, even if it was a friend, you know, I'm not gonna, I'm not going to sit for this decision. I think I can be impartial, but I am not sure, I've known this person since I was a kid, and I really, you know, want the best for them, or whatever it might be, so that, and we'll talk about that a little bit, so the last piece.
Thank you. Thank you. And, um, it was truly about the, it was, in that case, it was about the frustration of these developers of our process.
Yes, and I know, it's, it takes a long time to.
To figure, well, the process was, well, with subdivision in particular.
But you answered my question and I can answer them, if they say, hey, what do we do? I say, go get a application, we have a pre-application, and end of discussion, I, I can't.
Yeah, no, I, no, I think that you can tell people that, you know, because this is what happens. But when that, one of them goes and gets an application.
Then I'm done.
Well, what, what do you do? So, one of them goes and gets an application, now the application is in front of the commission, what do you do?
I think I have to abstain, right? If I know them personally, or if I have a, an interest?
Well, if you have known them personally, this is like just somebody randomly, you know, that says, uh, I, I heard you're on the commission, you know, what do I do here? And you said, you know, you can contact the planner and you can get a application. And you could even say, and it's on the website here, or whatever you information you might give them, which again, a lot, a lot of times, the best thing is just to send them to the planner, but if you give them that information, then when they're in front of you, you say, you know, I'm Commissioner DeYoung, I just wanna say for the record that the applicant actually ran, I ran into them at the grocery store and they asked me how they filed an application for this process, I sent them to the planner.
Right.
Um, and gave them the city website. Um, I don't think that, um, you know, because one, they haven't filed an application yet, so it's not technically an ex parte communication, right?
What if they already did and they're here, like to talk to?
And they asked you a different question, you still want to just disclose it on the record, um, and then we'll talk about whether or not, abstaining is not always the answer just because you have an ex parte communication. Abstaining is appropriate, though, and it certainly can be done, um, and it will be, you know, depending on the nature of the interaction, you know, we may say, you, you, uh, ex parte communications are prohibited under your code, right? So, the best way to solve the problem is to abstain, but at the same time, we need to weigh, there's five of you, so we need to weigh, we need to really think about and walk through that situation when and if it occurs, if that, you know, if that's fair. So, don't have them, let's start there. No ex parte communications, if you can avoid them, please do, they are prohibited, they can be a violation, if you do have them, you need to cure by, and not cure, but you need to disclose, and then at that point, we're in a due process proceeding, we'll figure out how to move forward. Um, arguably, it's not ex parte anymore when you bring everybody else into the conversation, right? You're bringing the public into the conversation and the other side, you're giving everybody a chance to speak to what was said, so you're, you've kind of changed the nature of the conversation at that point. But when we can, a lot of times, we say abstain, why, why create an issue given the, the provision of your code, right? Um, okay, so, social media, this, these are our, wait, that's a meeting, right? We talked about serial communications on our own, we didn't even need the slides, so we're doing great. Um, um, and just remember that serial communications, you know, uh, the clerk gave you excellent examples of how a in-person communication can turn serial, but you need to think about also a email conversation that can turn into a serial conversation, right? And so, they call it the spoken wheel, too, so, where you kind of have one person and everything's going out, and also polling, I hear, it still shocks me, the amount of times I hear people on commissions and councils say, well, can I poll my fellow counsel or commission members, right? And I'm like, the word poll is a dirty word, you know, okay? We do not poll because with, by polling, we get answers without the public there to hear how we got there, right? Okay. So, uh, social media, this is sort of the new hot topic, right? Because people go on the pages and maybe they have a, a group that is, you know, locked down to certain people, and you get three people making comments, and then there's other comments, and so, I encourage you not to engage in conversations regarding business in which you are, um.
Empowered.
Empowered to act on, or authorized to act on, where you have any acts, where there could be any access by your fellow commissioners. Now, that said, remember that I also fully understand that you have a right to free speech, and so, you get to engage in conversations, and I, unless you're violating the Open Meetings Act, we don't have a, you know, we're not telling you not to have those conversations, but we do see this as an area where there becomes a violation. So, I'm gonna once again say, if you end up putting something on there and you're talking about something, and then, um, you know, two commissioners like it, one hearts it, somebody makes a comment like, you go, girl, like, you print that out for me, please.
Okay.
And you bring it and you say, I made some comments on my Facebook page on this, and, you know, it turns out by the end of the day, the, you know, we, we, we've, more than three of us have, um, uh, talked on that, and put it in the packet, you know?
I don't understand about Palmer because, on one hand, I have a right to make a comment on something, say, as long as I'm not making a comment as.
Counsel or whatever.
As a committee member.
Yeah.
So.
But I think without naming any community in particular, I think the nuances in that case was that it was, it was an issue they were clearly, um, making a decision on as a council.
Yeah, it was pending before that.
It was pending, and there was, there was, so every case has little nuances.
Right. And again, they're gonna look at purpose and intent.
Goes away.
Well, you're right, it doesn't go away.
My other question is, why didn't anybody care? Why can't you comment on your neighborhood in Palmer?
Why, why didn't anybody care?
Right.
Oh, is that what?
And maybe they did, I just didn't read about it.
Yeah.
Maybe they did, if it were me, I would've came and said, oh, my goodness, I am in this private Facebook page and there was all this discussion about, you know, whatever the subject is, and, um, I did make some comments, and these were my comments, and, and I'm sorry.
Right. And then we print it, give it to you.
And then you print it, you put it in their packet, and you're just like, oops.
But if you didn't identify yourself as a commissioner, you still cannot make comments?
Yeah, well, you have to, so let's say one commissioner makes a comment, then another commissioner likes it, then a third commissioner is like, yeah, you know, you go, girl, but not noticing the liked comment from the other commissioner, and right? And then you have an Open Meetings Act violation, and it's really, there's no problem with the first comment or even the thumbs up, but the third person who missed the thumbs up, and sometimes there's like 500 comments on something, you know, so it's very easy to miss who's liked it, but it still has happened, you can't take away the approval. I'm gonna ban, you know, I, I am going to go to the commission and support X. Now, one, you deal with quasi judicial matters, and so you are like a judge, so it is also inappropriate for commission members to be talking about decisions because that is, in essence, an ex parte communication, right? You're talking to somebody, but not everybody necessarily, and not within the context of the case, so you are protecting due process rights, so that's one thing. But legislatively, let's say you, you go on there and you're talking about, you know, something within your duties to act, and it gets missed, so it gets missed, oops, you know, disclose it and, and cure it, and it's okay that it happened, it really is because the Open Meetings Act, one, it was not intentional, right? You did not intend to violate the Open Meetings Act, and even if it's clear, they wrote a comment and you did it and you just didn't think about it because you still did not intend to violate the Open Meetings Act. So, get cured, you have to cure, 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 you know, you have an act that does care about your, your right to freedom of speech and all of those things, it's designed to allow you to try to fix it, and in all of those cases, they never try to fix it.
Interesting if it's Facebook and it's public. So, did you really violate that? It is open.
You did because it wasn't a noticed meeting, so it's not, you didn't notice that you're meeting with these individuals, okay? You know, I'm meeting with the commission, so.
Don't, don't think of, Holly and I had, I love the way Holly explained this to me, don't, it, it's just a virtual room, it's no different than if you went to a coffee shop.
Okay.
It's a ver, but instead of.
It is a forever thing.
Instead of having a physical space, it, it's just a, now it's a virtual space with the same rules apply.
Yeah, but it's like they have a video.
Regardless of the subject matter?
No, only it matters on what you're authorized to act, always matters, which you're, you know, again, that's a smaller, more narrow window, so, for, in, in a lot of communities, it's council members where this comes up, I don't see it that much with commission members, mainly also because I feel like being a commission member is a little more lonely, like, because of the quasi judicial piece, you know, but the one thing you get to do on big important issues, if they, like, and a lot of your conditional use permits and variances, they won't require you to leave the, to, to deliberate, but on some big complex matters, you may be in that back room deliberating, and, or you may, I may advise the planner to set it up so that you are not issuing a decision on the same day that you're meeting, because we need to meet more than once to deliberate, right? And that is, you're in a room and you're talking about, what do I think is right, what do I think is wrong, based on the evidence that was presented and the law, and I am weighing all of these things and making a very difficult decision. And that is a space that only a quasi judicial body gets to, you know, and most of the time, you're not going there, most of the time, you have the criteria and the findings, and you listen to the evidence and you weigh it and deliberate, often openly in front of the individual, but that's something we'll talk about when we talk about quasi judicial. I would say.
Just a chair, I move for a 10-minute break.
Ah, thank you.
Okay, fine.
Hold on, just one minute, this is my expertise. Are we off?
No, we're not off yet.
One moment. Here, sit down, here. Okay.
The January twenty ninth special planning commission meeting is back. Time is eight P M.
Okay, so.
I have just a couple of quick questions. So is is the planner in the same role as a commissioner? When it comes to how many commissioners can be in the same room talking to the planner at one time?
So the planner is not a commissioner, so she doesn't count as a member of the commission. So when I say three, I mean three of the commissioners only. And that does not include the planner. So if there are two commissioners talking about something and the planner.
That is not.
That would not equal a a straight violation.
I was, I was pretty sure, but I I needed to just for everybody else to know what the planner's part would be in an open meetings law situation.
And I think there's, there's still some concern regarding the planner's role in a sort of spoken wheel serial communications, right? If the planner, if each one of you is talking to the planner about something and then the planner is is involved in perpetrating the discussion, right? So while I know, you know, Commissioner Seals does not approve of that. I'm pretty sure Commissioner Landell does not approve. I'm not sure how, you know, and then you have that conversation. And so then it's starting to tie into each other. So I don't want to create, I don't want to be. So I do worry always about the appearance of impropriety. Because then the public is looking especially for the planning commission. You are making decisions regarding the public's personal property, like their personal wheel property, right? Their actual property and interests regarding property that impact the things they care most about. Often their own property, what their safety is often influenced by land use, their peace of mind, quiet enjoyment. Oh, my gosh, I can't believe that, you know.
Biggest monetary thing they've ever spent money on.
Yes, the most expensive thing they have, whether and whether they be a business or an individual, you know, like property, real property is very. So for that reason, it's more important, I think, for the trust. If you want to maintain the trust of the community to not only protect against impropriety, but also the appearance of impropriety.
And once, even though it's been cured or disclosed, it may still lead to the public perception of improprietary.
Yes, and I think that's when you'll have discussions regarding like abstaining, you know, for a hearing, for example. I think I don't encourage you just to just to abstain mainly because you might run into a problem. As far as there might be people who are commissioners who have substantial financial interests and have to abstain, you know. And so and there for them, it's really a legal necessity. So it's important to be aware of the issues. It's important to be ready to discuss them. But I I find curing generally is a sign of a very healthy body. And I have rarely seen it lead to public to it to public judgment or the appearance of impropriety. That said, if it's significant enough, that person doesn't need to like abstain, that needs to abstain from participating in the proceedings. When we talk about a quasi judicial. But for the most part, you know, if it's like, hey, we ended up talking about this thing, we didn't mean to, you know. And then we'll decide how to move forward and what the cure looks like.
Thank you.
So I think again, and okay, so now we're going to talk about executive sessions. This is something that you don't have many executive sessions based on what your what your your duties are. Now, your contract provision, the modification regarding Title thirty five, that's one that could trigger a executive session. None of your comprehensive plan discussions are going to warrant an executive session, in my opinion. The one place will, but your decision, so what we're really looking at is the decisions that you make, the quasi judicial decisions you make. And arguably, executive session doesn't apply now. So but there's two ways. So because your meetings are noticed as a regular meeting, a legislative meeting, and then your hearings for your quasi judicial hearings happen inside that meeting. You know, often one method to deliberate might be, we might use executive session if you're going to deliberate outside the, you know, not in public, to deliberate, which is a exception to the Open Meetings Act and is appropriate for executive session. The only thing, the only reason why I struggle with this is because then you're going to follow the procedures for moving into and out of executive session. But you're in the middle of this quasi judicial proceeding where you're subject to due process. And I think it creates confusion, especially when when you're making decisions, when you're considering resolutions and ordinances. You might actually have a hearing, a public hearing on the instruments, meaning the ordinance or the resolution even. And then the public is really confused and they come in and they're and you're like, well, you can testify for this public hearing. And then you're telling, you know, John Doe that he has a hearing on the schedule and there are two totally different types of hearings. One's a public hearing that you're having to engage the public on a legislative matter. And one is someone who is there fighting for, defending, or or at least expressing their rights to property or their protest to somebody else's use of their property that affects, you know, their interests. So that's why it's, you know, that for me is one of the hardest things and it's making sure that. So if you're using your executive session, if you are not using it with, first of all, you, I would say with the commission, legal counsel sign off before any use of executive session because it's rare, you know, it's not something you're going to be doing regularly. And if you want to do it to deliberate, which how often do you guys use executive sessions to deliberate?
In in the, in the whole time that I've been on the planning commission, we have never used an executive session. We deliberate in the open in front of the applicant and the public.
Okay.
That's what we've done up until now.
Okay, and so I think we all, the new, for the updates to Title sixteen, preserve your right to deliberate outside the public purview, which is completely appropriate.
Because.
And so many people say that that actually protects the interests of the individual. Because think about it, when you are in a room and you've got an applicant and you've got the evidence and maybe the planner submits evidence saying, this is all my recommendations and here's the packet. And the person says, no, this is why. And then you have one interested person who says, yeah, but I live in that neighborhood, I really don't like what he's doing. And you've got an angry mob in the back being like, I don't like what he's doing either. And you're looking, you're like, well, it complies with everything in the code, though. How easy is it to say something different than that?
Than what you want to say or what you, I like to think about things sometimes.
Yes, yeah.
And there have been some meetings where there has been a quite enthusiastic crowd.
Yeah, so there you go.
Boy, I wish I'd have known about executive session then because it's hard. You can't satisfy everybody.
No, no.
And so and when, a couple of times we made a decision and there were uproars over it. And it it's the way it is, we got through it, but it was, it was very uncomfortable. So given, given us the option to actually deliberate outside of the public purview is probably a good measure.
Yeah, I think that.
I don't think we'd use it very often.
It's usually on bigger.
Something like.
Yeah. It's so.
Because you have an involved citizenship in a meeting that's vocal, you should have a sergeant of arms take care of that. But if you don't have a sergeant of arms, why would you have to go into executive session to take care of city business when the public is here?
When the public is not, so this is, okay, so we're going to talk about, this is where we get to the quasi judicial place. When you are making a quasi judicial decision, you are making a decision that involves an individual or a small group, right? And their rights to their property. And they have a due process right that that attaches to that process, right? So you don't get to make a decision that could harm or take away or limit their property right without giving them the appropriate level of due process. The public, their only right is to be able to see it, to watch it. They don't have a right to have a voice in that process. And I would argue that giving them the, I mean, right now they have a very strong voice in the, you know, they can, but the, under the statute, you can limit who gets to appear or challenge a property. They have application or permit to an aggrieved party, right? To somebody who's actually harmed by it. Because imagine you have a property owner who wants to do something on their property or is maybe going for a renewal of a permit that has allowed them to operate a business that they have been operating for ten years. And now they have all the evidence about why they've been in compliance and why they're going to be in compliance more and all of these things. And there's a concerted effort by members of the public. We don't want you to have this anymore. But it doesn't end, so it becomes, and that's okay. I mean, the councils and so councils decide and codes lay out how much process is given or is not given. Most communities have an aggrieved party status of to some extent for allowing a person to object and, you know, and come in as opposing party to challenge or protest a permit, right?
I can see it then as a good tool for anybody. So let's say the commission then would go into executive session with the applicant.
No, no, no.
No.
So so I would think of it this way, a judge, right? Picture a judge. A judge will issue a decision on the bench in some very small cases, like, you know, maybe like a DUI. Ninety percent of the time, and I almost, all land use cases, I've never seen a judge issue a land use decision, the final decision, without going and delivering. And he goes to chambers, they say, thank you very much for coming today. I will take all of the things that you said and under consideration and everybody leaves. And everybody goes home and the judge drafts a very long, complicated, like, well laid out. This is my decision and this is why this is my decision. I thought about this, I've thought about that. We looked at this, the legal, you know, the, I've got legal counsel and all of these different provisions of the law. This is the criteria we're marching through. This is the evidence you gave me. This is what I believed in that evidence, this is what I did not find credible. And you have solid written findings, which the court has found is required. So you have solid written findings that the commission has actually developed itself, right? So usually when commissions do take that time to go outside and deliberate in private, they do that. And they, it usually involves a more complex matter that requires a lot of thought.
Yeah.
Yes, and when you do that, the all commissioners, like, so you, it's basically you kind of vote on the decision. And if it comes out and there's a commissioner who's opposed, you say it, you're obligated to say it in the written finding. So it would say, you know, decision and written decision and name your case, you know. Three commissioners in favor, two dissent or opposed. This is the majority found, the following, and then it talks about what you found. And then a lot of times, you know, and then that written decision goes out. Now, sometimes commissions will meet again and they'll say this, you know, we're meeting, this is, we voted on this. This is what we voted, here's our findings verbally, and then that will go and be memorialized in writing. And there's, and you go through the deliberative process. So there's lots of ways that you get to get to an answer. But their job in a quasi judicial proceeding is not just to involve the public. Your job is to make the right choice, is to make, is to get to the right answer under the law.
Based on the evidence presented to you.
Yes, and then that's what we're going to talk about, that the individual, the applicant, needs to think, believe, and it needs to be a fair decision. And the only way that happens is if we do not have ex parte communications. If the evidence that the applicant is, that you're going to rely on for your decision is limited to the evidence that's being presented through the process so that the applicant has an opportunity to respond to the evidence, right? Now, they can put a witness on who's going to testify as to something and you can decide if that person, and they're a witness, right? When they testify as to their use of the property. And if somebody is an interested party, which now, that now under Title sixteen, they need to be an interested party who has engaged, who has sent, submitted a written protest or whatever, then that individual will put in evidence, you know. And the, and the testimony is evidence, so you get testimony and opposition, and your planner is putting in evidence. If she's recommending something's approved or denied and gives you all of the findings laid out, right? But anything beyond the scope of that, you're going to be getting into dangerous territory where it's ex parte communications and you're potentially violating the due process rights of the individual.
And that's why I wish we would use more executive sessions. And the complaints I've got from citizens, party A comes and asks for something. Three or four people opposed it. And three minutes later.
Yep.
The planner has already written that document with recommending yes, approve this. And in that sheet, which the public has access to, is also the approval sheet for the chairman to sign. We discuss in three to five minutes all the positive reasons to approve this. And there's never one mentioning that discussion on the opposition piece.
Negative reply, yeah.
Hundred percent agree.
Yeah, and so they said, wait a minute, I took time to come to your meeting and opposed my opposition and you didn't even hear a word I said. And the planner already had the, the paper already prepared to approve it.
And this came up, this came, Jamie, do you remember at the very beginning, one of the very first ones that we had, I said, well, do I put one that's a negative that we say? And we questioned that. I remember coming in and you were talking about at the borough, you know, how to word that. I, I love that you brought that up, thank you.
Well, I, I did research with Cindy and I did find a case at the borough where they actually brought two different ones in favor or opposed.
Yes, I love that.
But I, I wonder when we.
Well, we used to do that, Jamie, when I first went to the mission. We used to have two in the packet, one for yes and one for no.
But I also wonder, and I'm not, I don't work in planning, I don't, that's not my area. But if the, if the no is not grounded in law, how much weight do you put to the no?
I don't like.
If the yes is clearly permissible, because you got to follow your rules, unlike a council, right? A council has more leeway to go with their feelings, yes or no, on how they feel about something. They, they take a lot of things into consideration. I always thought on permits, yours was very narrow. You had to, whatever, if the land use said it was 75 feet, you didn't have much leeway to go beyond 75 feet.
Well, you're right, Jamie, it's not that whether we did the right thing. It is, we constantly beat up the public about not participating.
Okay, yeah.
And they come and participate and the only thing we discuss is what party A said.
Yeah, but I have seen, like, back, back to, I have seen where there's actually two different, a yes and a no.
Yeah.
But they were grounded in, I mean.
I would rather you deliberate outside than do a yes or a no. And then mainly because of the, and the reason why is your planner is your staff. And so let's say you get a conditional use permit. We have all those weird criteria, like harmonious to the neighbor, like things that are definitely involve discretion, right? The planner is, is schooled and knowledgeable regarding land use and these provisions. And it doesn't mean that she'll always be right and you can't say no. But her job is to say to you, the criteria for conditional use permits are the following. I have looked into condition one. I believe this is substantially met for the following reasons. And condition two, I don't think they met this condition for the following reasons. I think they have met this one, I recommend approval. That's a very useful tool to have. And it puts, you know, and the planner then is in a position, but this is the most important thing though. So the planning commissions are such an odd, odd duck because, you know, so the planner's in two positions. She's in the position where she's saying, you know, I think you should approve this. And she's in essence representing the city's position, right? It's our position, this is our law, you know, this is the, the land within the boundaries of the city. The city's position is that you should approve it. It looks like it complies with all of our criteria. Or the city's position is, we don't think this is a good idea, doesn't meet criteria two and three. She puts that in front of you. Now, so she can present that to the commission. The commission is now sitting as a judge and your planner is sitting as one of the parties. And then on the other side is the applicant, right? And the applicant will say, I think you should do this. And if the city and the applicant are aligned or, you know, you might have this other interested party who's the neighbor. And the neighbor is like, I think they're both, you know, crazy and this is a horrible idea and here is why, right? So now the commission says, all right, let's sort it all out. We have your application in our packet, right? We have all of the evidence, everything they've submitted in our packet. Because our packet now is a court file. That's how we have to think of it in our head. I have everything that came in the door from that applicant in my court file, right? I have everything that the planner wants to give me, which is the recommendation and the, um, in my court file. I even have a resolution from the planner, who, which is putting all of this in to a decision form for me, right? It's a proposed finding. I do that for judges all the time, you know, right? I, I file my motions and my complaint and then I put in the back a proposed order. It's not, I'm not making them sign my order, really. I don't have that power, right? But I'm presenting a formatted document. Now, 90% of the time, the court goes in there and they will do their own, or 98% of the time, you know, they're doing their own order. And maybe on a small issue, they might just take a pen and, you know, write it into the, but that's your providing structure. That's what the planner is doing in that position. But then we have, and the new code lays it out very well, you know, this person gets 15 minutes, this person gets 15 minutes, you know, protester maybe gets five minutes, I don't remember the exact times. But we go through and we listen to everybody. And then the commission deliberates. What is hard is when the commission's deliberating, um, and you're sharing your findings. And I think this is what Commissioner Brown is talking about, which is really, and nothing changes in the recommended findings proposed by the planner. So they look exactly the same, even though somebody says, I don't really believe that, that that criteria is met. I've been, you know, I've been looking at the evidence and I think there is a problem here. It shows that the road's too narrow to blah, blah, blah. Or there's, there's 15 neighbors here and 200 letters of dissent or whatever it is, right? But it's always going to be evidence that's in your case file, right? Never ever evidence and what, that's outside of your case file. So the evidence outside your case file is, I was driving by that property and I thought it looked ugly. I don't trust them, they're too much purple, denied, right? Like, your personal observations do not count. And we, yes, we understand, they're in there, you know, but they do not count. They are not a valid basis for denying or, so if you drove by, you know, try to forget. And you might want to disclose it, you could say, I drove by the property, um, you know, and I, I looked at it. Um, I think it might be, and here's something you can do, I would like to, um, I would like to postpone the hearing and, or continue the hearing, however we want to say it, be, so that we can have a site visit together as a commission. Because, right? Because I'm not sure that we went by it and I'm not sure that I'm going to be able to weigh in and not have, you know, that image in my head and not consider it.
Yeah, or one too many cars.
Yes, or, or I, you know, I'm looking at the evidence that's presented here and there's a lot that I don't understand and I think I need a site visit now. I think that you might drive the planner nuts if you start going on a site visit for every single, you know, quasi judicial hearing, but.
But, but that's my point for why.
It can't be used.
I wish we did more executive because, and also I find there's going to be more discussion when we're not in the public and there's more questions asked.
I, I think that for something that is very substantial, something that it's not an easy, you know, marching through the criteria and it feels, I think that it is, always leads to better decisions. That's been my impression because you have legal counsel to help scribe your thoughts and findings and attribute them. And I've found that those discussions are the most lively, that the commission's members always take it very seriously and they're willing to say some hard things and think through findings and, and get to the answer they think is right without fear of, you know, that immediate sort of, I'm answering to someone.
And not to prolong this, but I remember one mission, session we had here, it was against a large church in the valley.
Yeah.
And I believe the evidence we was given was not true. And I felt uncomfortable saying that because it was like 50 other members.
Richness, yeah.
50 other church members in the audience. And we made a decision, they got a positive result from us. After the meeting, three commissioners came to me and said, lie, lie, lie.
See, and that, that would make me mad. And it was also another.
Meeting violation.
Yes, violation, but the decision had been made already, so I didn't feel bad.
They can appeal.
They can appeal.
Commissioners.
No, 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 the church got a positive outcome.
The church got what they wanted, look at the crowd.
The interested party can appeal. So I think, right, an interested party can appeal.
But I mean, that's an example, I think if we had been in executive session, those other three commissions would have confirmed what I believe. It could have been a different outcome, but nobody felt comfortable with the room full.
Well, and you gotta worry about your safety now too, you don't. No, I'm not kidding, it's, it's, I deal with a lot of tenants and they're scary, people get scary.
But I do think it's important to remember that hopefully we understood that when we took this job, it was not going to be a popularity contest.
Always not.
And we were going to have to make decisions that may anger large groups of people or, uh, you know, I was here for the one where there was angry parties, but in some ways it's kind of part of the job.
Yeah.
Like it or not.
Nonetheless, it's still uncomfortable if you're not used to.
Yeah, it's uncomfortable, but.
Being in uncomfortable situations.
That's why they pay us the big bucks.
But the opposition, the opposition force feel, you didn't discuss this and the decision was made before the meeting started.
Yeah.
Oh.
I understand Commissioner Brown's point very well. But we have to remember, we have to follow the code, um, the recommendations. And as far as I've always been told since I've been on the commission is, we can't do drive bys and take a look.
Can't do drive bys, no.
Okay.
Can't do drive bys, you can go together on a site visit.
Doing a drive by, I'm like, whoa.
No, that's, that's what I'm saying, don't do.
As a body, we could do it, right?
Right, that's why, I'm sorry if I was unclear. What I was trying to say is, don't do drive bys without disclosing that you did a drive by, right? And so just don't do them.
Don't do them, but if you accidentally, I mean, we're a small town. If you drive by.
Right, that's why, I mean, you're not gonna.
That's, you can't miss that one, I mean, I.
Yeah, and you take a gander and you're like, oh my goodness, oh gosh, I just remembered, that's our permit. Yeah, like we have that before us, but I already drove by and took a really good gander.
I couldn't help it.
At the next meeting.
Yeah.
And the point is, is we're all making our judgments off the same information. If I know more because I've walked the property on my own, that I'm making a decision based on information you don't have and we can't make the same decision, we have to make the decision from the same basis of understanding. Same thing if I've had a conversation with the person and they've told me some stuff that isn't brought out in the meeting, then I'm, 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 I'm making a decision on information you don't get to have and therefore it's not a fair decision.
What about research? No.
No.
So it's their obligation, so when you have a conditional use permit, right? Your case file, that's all you have. And if you don't have what you need in your case file, speak up, you know?
That's kind of research, because if, if you wanted something else added or you had questions.
You don't add it though.
No, no, no.
To the permit applicant is obligated to sort of bring what they, they need to bring for, and they bring you what they bring you. And you're going to make a decision, if you, if, if what you have is not there and you feel like you don't have the evidence you need to make a decision, then we'll, we'll cross that bridge when we come to it together. Because that's actually kind of a complicated process, but there is a process. But generally speaking, I am an applicant, it's my burden to bring to you an application that has all of the things and all of the information that is required under the code. And when I bring that to you, then the, um, the planner will take that information. I'll probably work with the planner, you know, and the planner will, if there's something's missing, the planner has the discretion to say, this is not complete, you're missing something. And then I get another shot maybe to, to make it complete, but then I'm in front of you and I have my complete application. And if you're like, this isn't a very strong argument for this one criteria, then you're going to make a determination, you know? And I do think it is okay, if you're looking at, well, your case file and you're like, we need a site visit, I think we need a site visit, then again, contact the planner. But that is, there is a way to do that so that we're not violating, um, the due process rights of an individual. And we would, because of the way that we've structured it, we would maintain an open meet, we would make sure there was no Open Meetings Act violation. Not because, right, we're in a quasi judicial, but are you going to talk about other business? We have all of the commissioners going to a site, one location, we're going to notice that as a public meeting. So it cannot get more complicated, right? And it's only.
I could livestream it, no problem.
And I am telling, yes.
So, and, and basically wearing our quasi judicial hat, we are relying on the due diligence of the applicant, the city, the city attorney.
You are relying on the due diligence of the applicant, mostly. I mean, you're making a decision and it's their job to reach the burden and show you now, yes.
The full amount of information to us.
Exactly, because they are the applicant, right? So the, the, now, the planner is obligated to represent the city's interests. But technically, the planner could just be like, I don't really, the city doesn't really care. What do we, there's evidence, that would never happen because the planner would be.
He doesn't care.
Yeah, whatever you guys want to do, you knock yourselves out, right? Then you're looking at the application and trying to decide, so.
Clarify, so part, part of my role in the clerk's office is we ensure public notice requirements are met. So Cindy would just work with us to ensure those, we have standards that those, and we're consistent that those public notice requirements were met, so we don't have any OMA violations, so.
Right, oh, for the site visit, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, you're not going to just leave your meeting and run out to the car.
And go by the site.
Right, right. We think we need one, let's go.
Oh, and somebody's suburban, you know, that's not gonna, I mean, you could, but we're going to notice it first.
And the thing is, both parties, so if you have an interested party and you have a applicant, both are going to have a right to have, um, sort of their views represented or to know that it's an objective viewing, right? So a lot of times it's an objective party that is identified and not objected to by all the parties to the proceeding, and then that person is who sort of gives you the tour. You know, so that's, that's often, you need a point of contact, that's approved. I, I generally do not advise doing a site visit unless you can get a, a approved party, meaning non objected. I've never had a problem getting a non objection for that. Most of the time, they may say, well, I want my person present. So they might both have a real estate agent present or whatever it is, but it works out, but it's a lot of work. It takes a lot of resource management, a lot of time, a lot of notice. And, and it doesn't mean that you can't do it. It's just, these are tools to be aware of. Most of the things that the commission decides it may not be necessary. I do believe that, um, and I think it might be worth, you know, if it's something the commission is interested in, your code's going to allow it, might be something to talk about and explore in the future is, and we're going to have training on making good findings. In that training, I go through three different options for how you make findings. One is in deliberating in private and then with a attorney. And then the attorney drafts your written findings for you and then it goes back to the, um, commission to approve them. And then those are issued. One is your planner draws up your findings and then puts them in front of you and you either approve or deny them and you can change them, right? Of course, they're your findings. Um, and then, um, another one is, um, so that's sort of the planner is, and the other, the other one is you, like the chair, I'm trying to remember the third one. Um, I think the third one is that the commission drafts its own findings and then it either goes to the planner or the attorney for sort of a, you know, it's sort of a much more cursory. I don't love that one. I feel like, you know, you want to get to the place where, if you're going in to deliberate, go and get the best findings you can that represent your actual decision, you know? And you're giving somebody, because they didn't get the benefit of an answer right then, give them the benefit of a comprehensive answer they fully understand.
Is a commissioner allowed to come in and talk to the planner on a CUP that's on our agenda?
I would say no. And so this is very important, so you are a judge and the planner is a party. So if you, but here is where that gets messy, because the planner is also sort of the clerk. And so all of the information that you might need, right? So.
She has, yeah.
Right, she has, and you have, so I think when, so for that reason, I say, no, don't come in and ask for additional information. But you have, if you're not getting your packet, you haven't got the information, then I recommend sending it in writing. So then we can see what you're, you know, so you would say, I noticed that there's a, the following conditional use permit is appearing before us on X date. Um, I don't see a, a statement from, you know, any, I didn't see any statements from anybody other than the application itself. Am I missing something? You know, and it's appropriate for the planner to say, nope, that's all we have. You know, so when you're, and then the planner will work with the chair on a hearing script that walks through the hearing and who gets what amount of time. And then the commission will listen to the evidence. There's a time to ask questions and then question the applicant and question the parties. And the commission can ask questions. And the commission can ask questions, you know? Do, but you said it was happened here, but I don't see it there, do you have a picture? We didn't, you didn't submit a picture, we have no evidence of this. We're not gonna be able to prove it if you didn't have evidence of this, or we're not gonna be able to, you know, deny it if the interested party didn't put. You know, the following evidence.
And how does a commissioner question the findings of the planner? Other than at this table?
That's exactly how you question the findings of the planner.
And that could mean a long time to get that CUP through.
Well, I'm not sure, so what you're doing is the planner is putting their findings. Right, and those are their findings, and the applicant has put their findings, and they have to prove, you know, so. If the planner has said that they think it's not harmonious to the neighborhood, and they've put the reasons there. Then the question is, when the applicant says, yes, it is harmonious to the neighborhood, look at this place, and this place, and this place, and you're gonna weigh the evidence. That's presented to you, and then you're gonna make a decision. And that's the evidence you have, you don't have any other evidence, that's the evidence that you've been presented with. So you'll either approve the planner's recommendation, and really, that's not the proper way to say it. Really, you're approving the application or you're denying the application, based on whether or not they submitted substantial evidence, they had met the criteria. Right? Did they submit substantial evidence that they met the criteria? If you don't have enough evidence to say they met the criteria, then maybe they, they did not meet their threshold requirement to get that permit.
Or if you don't agree with the findings, then you vote nay.
Well, the, don't agree with the findings, that's a great, that's a wonderful example of what, what does that mean? So you're a judge, but you're not all-power.
I don't know what that, yeah.
So, but you can, so, don't agree with the findings, so they say, let's turn to conditional use permit.
What page, ma'am?
I don't know yet.
Soon as he gets there.
Let me see.
And this is in the old Title sixteen.
This is in the books? Yes, this is in the, this is in the old Title sixteen. And.
Good findings, section.
I am assuming that we would've put this in, I'm hoping, okay. All right, we've got a general approval criteria, okay, that's easier, because the, the old code is not so easy to find the. Conditional use.
Forty-three, okay.
That's a general approval, yes, okay, sixteen sixteen fifty, right? Um, all right, so you can grant.
The time, today, right?
Right, this is your code, right, thank you, thank you, Jamie, yeah, we gotta stop doing that. We have a law, it takes time to change laws, this is our law, right, and I, I, I do it too, like, this is the law. It'll be the law until there's a new law.
Until it's changed.
Yes, and it takes time to change an entire title, and there's been a lot of sort of.
We just stick with.
We don't know what the law is, we know what the law is, that's right, okay. Um, general approval criteria, right? An administrative approval use permit, elevated administrative approval, elevated use permit or conditional use may be granted. If the following general approval criteria and any applicable specific approval criteria are complied with. The burden of proof is on the applicant to show that the proposed use meets these criteria and applicable specific criteria for approval. So, now, mind you, one of the things about your code, when we interpret this, if these approval, if you find that the approval have, that criteria have been met. We, we read the may to be a shall, so just to be clear. Because if you find that all of the criteria are met, you're talking about someone's property right.
Right.
Right, and so if they have proven that, then they get the, whatever, you know, permit or, they're, they're seeking. Um, if they haven't proven it, then you don't have to do it, so you go through, and it says, let's just say, it says, neighbors' due deference. Has been given to the neighborhood plan or comments and recommendations from a neighborhood with an approved neighborhood plan. So lots of discretion for you to, um, you know, in your writing to say. That you're giving deference to the neighbors, what the neighbors had to say, that's when your findings would talk about what the neighbors had to say, and it's not that. You have to agree with what the neighbors say, but you have to acknowledge, according to your code now, you definitely need to give deference to what they say. So then when you say, um, Commissioner Lang, Langel, did I say it properly, Langel or Langol?
It's spelled Lamb Gil, but it's pronounced with an H in there, don't ask me why.
Okay.
Landshell.
Landshell, I'm saying it wrong altogether, and all of my, okay, landshell, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm gonna do that. Landshells.
That's what I said.
I'm sorry, that's an S, no.
All right. It does sound French, yeah.
Langiel?
There we go.
Langiel.
So, when you say, what if I don't agree? It's appropriate not to agree with the neighbors or with what they have to say against the neighbors, right? Like, there's deference there, there is discretion there. Um, the proposal is substantially consistent with the city comprehensive plan and other city adopted plans. Well, I don't agree, that's gonna have to go farther than that as a, as a commission member. The question is, is it consistent? So you would look at the specific provisions of the comprehensive plan and determine, is it consistent? You know, and hopefully you'll have a write-up from the planner, sharing the, the city's position regarding whether or not it's consistent. Which often will be helpful because it'll say, this is consistent with X provision of the comprehensive plan, which says X. You know, and that's helpful to have that information, but it is the commission's obligation to know the comprehensive plan and decide, right? Um, and, and it's special uses, the proposal is substantially consistent with the specific approval criteria of sixteen sixteen sixteen. So what you'll often find is the planner has laid out not only the findings for general criteria, but she's also include the findings for special criteria. I've seen the reports that the planners do, they always include all of these findings, which is very helpful. And they'll say, this is substantially consistent with these in this way, and march through them all, right? But that doesn't remove the obligation of the commission to make those determinations and weigh the evidence and think about it. Now, you are the decision makers, so when I go to court and I hand the judge a brief. And the other side hands the judge a brief, the judge will read both briefs, think about it, and decide. But, then, no judge is going to just take my word for it.
No.
You know, right? They're going to do the research, and, and for them, I, when I say research, I am not talking about the evidence. The evidence, the judge is only gonna have the evidence that they have in, in court. But they're going to look at what I'm arguing, and they're gonna look at the case file, and that's what I mean when I say do their research. You know, and they're gonna look at the, so you know your comp plan, you have these, um, documents. The planner will make sure you have the provisions that you need to really think about whether or not it meets the criteria. What's hard about your code right now is the criteria is a lot of criteria, it's all discretionary, or a lot of it is discretionary. And, uh, and it's things like, you know, a lot of it is things that are harder to weigh. Things like dimensional standards, parking, utilities, drainage, those are a lot easier, and so if you tell me I didn't agree with that. Well, it is, or is not, X square feet, right? Did they put evidence in to tell you how many feet it is, that's kind of thing. So, it's difficult, and it's frustrating, when you do quasi-judicial, uh, work. Sometimes you want them to give you the information you feel you need to make the most informed decision. But as quasi-judicial decision makers, your job is to make a decision on the application and evidence. That's been presented before you, not to investigate and change the scope of the investigation, or the evidence, does that make sense? And it's, and it's, and it's hard, and you will find yourself sometimes saying, I'm sorry, but I cannot find that the criteria seven was met. I mean, there's just no evidence here, you know, I mean, all I'm seeing is your site plan. That shows me that three parking spots, you're telling me there's room for seven more, I, I, I have nothing that shows that to me. Is there something here that shows me that there's seven more? If the answer is no, the answer is no.
Can they, can they take their evidence and leave and come back for another shot at it with seven parking spots?
Well, that's a good question, I mean, and counts are, sorry, the commission does, and this is something we'll have to think about. But the commission does have, let's say they were like, I didn't realize that you were gonna be asking me for evidence of, about that.
People wouldn't.
You know, I need, you know, and, and the commission does have the ability to say, well, you know what, we'll continue this hearing. Until the next commission meeting, um, but, you know, we wanna see X, Y, and Z. But I need to look at your code only because you're making a decision best, uh, be, um, based on the evidence before you. But being able to say, you know, go back and address this issue. Or we don't have enough evidence to make a decision based on this, there's a room there. So, to the extent you wanna do that, though, I think the best way for us to deal with that is to do it together. And the reason why, so one of the things the commission has, you're looking at evidence, you want the evidence in front of you. You don't want, if somebody gives you evidence, you know, you may talk to the other side and see if they, you know, are willing to allow it. But generally, we don't accept evidence that isn't provided in the record, so that the other party has notice of the evidence, right? But there's a room, there's room to, you know, to extend the hearing, there's room to do all of those things. But we have to do it within the parameters of your code, and your code is in flux, so what's hap, what's coming is different. Um, that said, it's really about fairness, and it's really about, um, it's about. Making sure you're not giving somebody.
Referential treatment.
Referential treatment, or that somebody else has an opportunity to respond to something you put in, so. Um, and not creating complete uncertainty, right? So the code as proposed is very specific, you get to, you didn't have a complete application. You get to put, uh, testify for X amount of time, the person opposes for X amount of time, then you can cry, um. You know, you can respond for X amount of time, decision is issued once all the evidence is considered. So, um, the process for going through that, though, there is some flexibility.
Well, and say in a case where there's neighbors coming to talk against something. Their feelings aren't really evidence, so like, this isn't allowed in our home, in our subdivision. Well, then, somebody would need to show, bring a copy of the document. That says it's not allowed in that neighborhood, cause otherwise, isn't that just hearsay evidence? That they don't want this in their neighborhood, even that, so there's ten neighbors that don't want this certain thing going on in their neighborhood. But they meet all the code and the requirements, so the testimony, the emotional testimony. I, I.
Now, this is.
Weight does that have?
Now, this is a big reason why we're changing your code, so the public has, imagine if the judge. Someone gets accused of a, a DUI, and they, or let's say somebody commits a crime. And, and someone dies, right? And they're on trial, and then the judge just opens the back room and says, would the public like to come up one by one and give a comment regarding the individuals? Now, that's a more significant right, we're talking about a person's right to, you know, I mean, that's more substantial, we would all agree. But property rights really matter to people, they are important to people. And we now open up the room and allow the public to comment on each, and, and on all property rights, right? Like, right now, that's how we have it set up, so we set up our hearings as if they are public hearings and a legislative matter. Which puts the commission in a very awkward position, because you're not just focused on this applicant. And this interested party who really cares enough to actually write a detailed answer, you know what? Are, I am the association, the condo association president, we can't do that in our, in our association. And here are all of the problems, and I am protesting this.
One comment about that.
And I have a question when you're done.
That, that can be addressed through the comp plan, because you can take a neighborhood association plan and add it to part of the comp plan. Just as a heads up, this is more of a general comment as we're doing the comp plan, keeping that in mind.
Oh, okay, well, that's, yeah, that sounds very, and so there's, that sounds very.
Yeah, just a, that was just a.
Well, that was my question yesterday, kind of, if you are com- compliant with everything the city allows, like, you wanna build a garage structure. And the neighbors don't want it because it blocks, I don't know, something, but the HOA says it has to be twelve hundred square feet, but the city says it only has to be a thousand. I'm just throwing numbers, who wins? What if it's not active?
No, well, I think we go through our criteria, so that's an excellent way to ask.
Well, there's no, there's nothing in here about HOAs and.
Then the HOA is going to have to, so with, let's say, we say, okay, it's approved. Because we've taken into consideration all of these things, and really, under our code, under our laws, it's approved. Then they come and they say to the HOA, I've got a permit, and the HOA says, well, you're still part of our association and it's prohibited. It's prohibited, according to the HOA, they're gonna bring up civil action against them to shut it down, and we're gonna do whatever they're gonna do, it's, you've entered into. The HOA has a document that regulates what happens on that property, but it's not the city's, just like anything else.
City would not supersede, but what if it's not an active HOA? What if it hasn't been active for twenty years?
The city supersede, the city, we.
Right, our laws are laws.
Our laws, but to allow. Conflicts with the HOA, correct me if I'm wrong, if the HOA says something, that's between the HOA and to deal with the homeowner.
The city would allow it.
Yeah, but the city's gonna go through its criteria, yeah.
Our code.
And our job is not to enforce the HOAs, the, what does it be doing is the HOA, yes. Cause the HOA would make up, be in essence, making laws for the city, right? If the HOA could say, well, we're gonna say we have to do all, and the city has to enforce our laws. Well, there's all kinds of things that HOAs have said over time, that have not been lawful, right? So, we're not about to start enforcing HOAs.
Another question, just.
That doesn't mean, though, when they come in as a neighbor.
Emotional testimony.
Yeah.
Because, but they kept referencing this document that nobody could provide.
And that's another good point, so, and then you can, and at that point, this is what the commission has to remember. That's the member of, of the public engaging in public comment versus an interested party engaging in testimony.
Bingo.
And that is why it's very, so I don't like public testimony at quasi-judicial hearings. I love public testimony at legislative meetings, when you're talking about the comp plan and all of those things. And I absolutely respect the participation of interested parties who have a right to present evidence, have a voice. Right, and, and so one of the discussions that the commission had with our office and with council. There was a big discussion on how much do we want to go to the place where you're only allowed to challenge a application? If you're an agreed party, do we wanna limit appeal, right? Who, who gets to appeal a decision? And the, the decision ultimately was, at least at this stage, was, was interested parties. We don't wanna go so far as to require harm, but we do want them to show that they are engaged in the process before we give them a seat at the table. Um, in the hearing procedure, which is a great, I mean, I think that's a great in-between.
HOAs, you know, this valley's been here a long time, the borough was here and did good planning prior to giving it to the city. HOAs that were recognized by the law, you're saying they outacced the city?
No, we're saying the city laws, the city laws are governed, period. Now, if an HOA, if someone puts into evidence that an HOA agreement, um, would be violated by the use. I would assume that maybe that person is a neighbor, is an interested neighbor, you know, and that they are putting, putting evidence into. In that way, because we give due deference to a neighborhood plan or comments and recommendations from a neighbor. You know, so if we have, I would, I think there might be some consideration there with, it's really, you're considering the feelings of the person who's putting it in, if they're an interested party. Right, um, so you're thinking of it that way, there's no standard right now that would have you consider the HOA requirements. I mean, it's just not, it's not.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's what I thought.
It's not really within the purview of the decision we're making, it's not, we're not considering the HOA. The HOA is considering the HOA, we don't consider other contracts that people entered into either. You know, businesses, we don't look at the contracts for the division between, of interest between their shareholders, you know, right? We're not looking at that, or what they.
Approved neighborhood plan then.
An approved neighborhood plan, oh, so this is where the question is coming.
And the.
A neighborhood plan is generally done through the, um, through the comp plan, I thought.
Yes.
So it's an approved, that's a city document, that's a.
But not.
You know, right, it's, so that's a process, you'll have neighborhood plans.
Like the lot lines and the setbacks and.
I think what ends up happening, and correct me if I'm wrong, Cindy, but usually, like, with the comp plan process, like, you'll have, you'll have. like, you'll have, you'll have, there's probably an app, and we'll have to, but I, there's a process for creating a committee or a group that creates a neighborhood plan and submits that to the city, and there's some sort of approval.
A neighborhood plan is a subdivision, correct?
No.
Not necessarily?
Let's get, they exist today.
No.
Okay, let's
Yes, they do.
Oh, wait.
Oh, yeah, I thought we Are you saying are there, are there, is there a neighborhood plan currently? Yep, um, that part, I, I'm mainly addressing number um, one. Neighbors on, on page forty-four, um, due deference has been given to the neighborhood plan.
Or comment.
That's not a HOA, though, the neighborhood plan, I thought we had a discussion about neighborhood plans, and the idea was, we haven't done a comp plan in a while, but there is a process to, for neighborhoods to develop plans that express their interests, it's sort of, you know, allows, and how that's done, and we can come back and, and update the council on that, cause I don't remember, it was one of those things where I'm like, okay. But, but it's, you know, if it's there, if they have one, if they've adopted one, but it is a tool, it's not a, it's not an HOA.
So would you recognize me as a, as a neighbor who a junkyard is going in next door to me, am I now inter- interested, inter- interested party?
You have to, under the new, so, under the current code, anybody can, so that doesn't have the limitations. So you are, you know, and that's why, and the public participates in the process as well, and under the
And the reason I ask that because he was referring to
You need to file a
Feelings and uh, and uh, emotions and stuff, but I am now your supporter because that affects my property.
Yeah.
And your decision will affect my property value, so now you are affecting me by your positive or negative decision out of this body here.
Yeah, what becomes an interested party?
In the, in the code as proposed, we define it as, you have to file, let me see, I think it's
Has it changed?
It's, we specifically defined it so that it included someone who's basically engaged in the process. So we didn't change, we didn't make it aggrieved, but we added a requirement that you are filing a statement of opposition.
So I need to file a form of
So you choose, you're choosing to be engaged, and it's not just, I happen to come to the meeting. You know, it's, okay, I'm choosing to be engaged now, because that holds the person accountable, they get, they submit things and
Neighbor, yeah.
But we don't require that they be a neighbor, which that is, a lot of communities require aggrieved status, and then they will define that, a presumptive aggrieved status, if you're within the same, um, you know, within X square feet from the property, or you're within the same zoning district, or something, they might put a control on it to, for a great party, but LaSalle is very inclusive and allows anyone to be an interested party so long as they
And I thought that's why we had the twelve hundred
Yeah, that's what I was just
The twelve hundred feet is an implied city agreement that if you're within twelve hundred feet of this junkyard, you are
Well, that's notice, so that's, so that's not changing status, right? We still require, under the proposed code, there is a requirement that they participate in the process. If they want to, if they're, they're not an interested party until they file that statement of opposition. And then they are, they are given notice if they're within the twelve hun- you know, if they're within the parameters, whatever the property
Oh, the mailer, where they send out.
Yes, so they'll be giving notice, and that's only in, it depends on the type of hearing that's at play, right? But for a conditional use permit, for example, right, the notice is going to go out to
Twelve hundred feet.
Twelve hundred feet, and all of those individual property owners will decide whether or not they are an interested party as they decide whether or not
So do they file with the planner or with the city clerk?
Um, I will, I mean, I'd have to go back and go through Title sixteen, but I think we file with the
No, if you're an interested party, you, you do a co- co- comment back to the planning. And then when we get the record on appeal, you're only an interested party when you're part of that record.
I think they file a, yes, let's see. Yep, and they all get the right to appeal.
Kick in on appeals.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
I, I know, I know nothing until
You don't want to know anything.
Right, actually, you're right, I don't
Well, you should, well, you
Yep. Until the appeal process.
Right.
Yep, I know when, I get a notification from the planning that a decision was made, and here's X amount of days to file an appeal, so I'm kind of on standby that there could possibly be an appeal coming in. But that's as much as I want to know.
Well, you're welcome to more.
Yeah, the interested party part was a little um, interesting to me. Specifically for why you were saying, okay, at what point does twelve hundred feet, do you become um, interested? Or maybe even not the twelve hundred feet, like, can somebody outside the twelve hundred feet be a part of the person who can then come up and say, well, this is my city, I may live without, outside this area, but I think it's a bad idea to put this here.
Pig farm or something, yeah.
What's wrong with pig farm?
Yeah, so, so, so you guys, what you have proposed is that, so it's the twelve hundred feet, right? And anybody can be an interested party, and they provide, and I just, I think the way that it works, and I'm sorry, I think I was confusing things in the sense that I'm talking about the right to appeal.
Okay.
The right to appeal as only involves a interested party who participated in the proceeding below.
Okay.
So, and I think that's, so that is different, it didn't used to be, you could, anybody could participate.
Under the existing code part of, I hope we clean this up, is that includes anybody that testified, so anybody off the street.
Yes.
So, so Your question about
I'm the next door neighbor, I don't testify in the original hearing, I can't come in later.
That's a purpose, the purpose is to keep people coming in on appeal, because think of the permit holder or the per- the applicant. I've come, I presented all of my evidence, I did everything that you've asked of me, um, and then you asked me a bunch of hard questions, and I answered to these five interested parties over here who all participated. And then we're going through the appeal, they were all there, and they were all engaged, but I got appealed by someone who didn't show up before and asked a bunch of questions, I could have answered, I could have given you that information, I could have responded to the testimony that they're adding.
I don't believe you.
But I couldn't, yeah, but I couldn't do it because you weren't here, right? And so
And you never had a bunch of appeals, yeah.
So now my right has just been, I may have got an approval, it'll be a year before, it might be a year before I get a decision because you didn't show up despite having
Mailers and all the things.
Yes, and notice, but then the question becomes, so with, do you have to tell everybody about every hearing, right? So we, that's another thing, like, an administrative hearing versus, or, sorry, administrative permit versus a conditional use permit versus a, so making sure we're balancing the rights of that permit applicant with the rights of the public, with the rights of a neighbor, which is a different level, and the rights of a quote-unquote interested party, which is a very broad term. So you are still allowing a lot of public process in your permitting procedures, you're certainly keeping those public and open.
Do you have to post too, cause I know I had to do something for the borough, and you have to post, and you have to tell all the neighbors, and that's your job, though, that's not the city, that's your
That's the planner's job.
Oh.
So, and she
The borough makes you do, you do it.
I, I give the tools, when we have our pre-application meeting, we, I have a um, a complete list of everything that's going to happen in the timeline part of it, and then we give them a laminated posting so that
Right.
Right, and then they go out on this day to post it. Um, real quick, Holly, can I, the neighborhood plans, it is definitely in here, and it's
Oh, yeah, what is the
It says, the city, sixteen oh eight point oh five oh. The city encourages areas to develop neighborhood plans which may be reviewed, modified, and adopted by the city as an amendment to the comprehensive plan. City adopted neighborhood plan shall contain policies to guide land use and improvements within the area and shall be used as a basis for approval in the affected area under this title. But then, interestingly, it talks about number one and number five, both have the same definition, but yet it says, one says neighbors, and the other one says neighborhood, I thought that's interesting.
Look, do we have any, do we have any attached to the comp plan today?
Excuse me?
No.
Okay. Are you sure? As I know, but I, no, I don't know.
Okay, I just feel like, well, I remember discussing taking that out, and then it was discussed that that was actually useful, and I don't remember, I mean, so we left it, you know, we, we made sure it stayed in there, but I think I thought there might have been, so anyway, I thought there might be some neighborhood plans, but that's a total aside. As, as we suspected, so it's all good, it's part of the comp plan, you do need to follow and, and look to the neighborhood plan and the neighbors, right? The neighbors matter too, so the neighbors get deference for the, the testimony they present, and the neighborhood plan, to the extent one exists, maybe not exist at all, you know? But that, that also gets deference.
Whole conversation started
But it is not an HOA.
Started with the pros and cons of executive session.
Right.
So back to executive session, what is your recommendation?
So, I mean, I think that, I don't, you know, again, that's going to be, we're going to go through findings and how you go through it at our next planning session, and I have works, worksheets for you on that, we walk through making findings, it's a really, actually, it's pretty labor intensive, you know, so, um, so we all have that. But I'm not, I'm not going to make a recommendation, I would just say what you do is lawful. And we'll move on for now.
What an attorney out, sir.
Whatever you do, be proud.
So you have the PowerPoint, you'll see here, this is sort of my cure, cure, and then cure again, you just need to read the last sentence. Oma expressly states that a body may cure a violation by holding another meeting with notice, that's in forty-four sixty-two three ten F. And so we always want to make sure if we do something that's the Open Meetings Act violation, that we are curing it. Uh, this one, this slide really deals with quasi judicial, do you know what hat you're wearing? And we worked really hard, I think, to go through and work on that with the duties, and you all did fantastic. Um, the other thing, um, don't forget you're with the office, it matters. Um, and it's used sometimes, especially in light of the Code of Ethics, to make sure that, you know, so make sure you're compliant with that, and that's, will also help inform your Oma judgment, right? So this is very important, sixteen thirty-four ten. A planning commissioner shall be impartial in all decisions, both in fact and in appearance. No planning commissioner may engage in ex parte contact with any person interested in an appeal concerning the appeal either before or after the appeal hearing. So when I say cure, 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 that's good enough under Oma, but it might not be good enough under Code of Ethics. So, but, and that doesn't mean, I am not trying to scare you, I am not saying, don't tell us about it, and don't cure, because I think there's an argument that if you cure, and we deal with it properly
You remedied your code.
You're remedying that ex parte, you're removing any harm, right? And so we can, and we can, um, so if a Code of Ethics is fought, fought against you, you're saying, let's say it's brought, you've had an ex parte communication here, and then you disclose it at the next meeting, that is going to be a significant consideration by any hearing officer deciding that Code of Ethics. Yes, I see the ex parte communication here, but I also see that it was made public on this date and here, and put in the packet, and now, is it really ex parte anymore? And then they're going to look to the harm, and you will have mitigated a lot of the harm by curing. So we still get back to the same place, cure, cure, cure. Jamie, do you have any time? Oh, my gosh, I'm to the
I think we're, yeah, why don't, do you want to do, so, okay.
So
I'm sorry.
No, no, not at all, this was fantastic. Do you
Yeah, I haven't, yeah.
Commissioner Lake Gill and, and DeYoung, do you feel like you have a grasp on Parley to get through until we meet again?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I mean, I'm sure you feel, I mean, yeah, I have a good grip.
Jamie, are you coming to the February, are you two kind of Can you come to the February meeting on findings and do parliamentary first?
Yeah, we're available, yep. So it'll really be the refresher.
I think we should keep Sarah here longer, so.
I know. Well, thank you, and I apologize for that.
Sure, then.
No, no, we have stuff to do here.
Oh, okay, no, I'm kidding.
Chair Seals, is, is there a motion to exit committee of the hall?
Commissioner Brown moved to exit committee of the hall.
Do I have a second?
Stafford seconds.
Any, is there any discussion?
Thank you.
Are there any objections? With no objections, the motion passes unanimously, we have exited commuted, committee of the hall, the time is nine twelve P M. We are now at audience comments, a time for members of the public to share their views with the commission. This is not a question and answer period or time for dialogue, speakers may be referred to administration or issues raised may be taken under advisement by the council or administration. Is there anyone present who would like to address the commission?
Here you go. Where's the wisdom for?
Please write your name and contact information on the
Sure, I did a
Sign-up sheet, when you are finished, state
Right, right there.
Oh, I, I'll, I'll get it.
I take it?
I'll, I'll get it out there.
We'll give you some leeway.
Thank you, I will get it written out there.
State your name for the record, you have three minutes.
Won't take that long. Um, Kathy Cottle, city council member, this was a really great evening. I, I thank you for letting me sit in on this, I know it was a public meeting, but um, this was great conversations, great questions. And I, I like a lot of the back and forth about roles between planning commission and council, and, and some with administration. We're all on the same team, and we all need to work together, and the more we understand each other's roles in each of our commissions and councils and administration, the better we can all work together. And I just applaud you all tonight, um, as, as well as our clerks and, and um, our attorney for the, the great information. I was always raised that no knowledge is wasted. My great-grandfather instilled that in me when I was very young, and um, everybody needs refreshers, I don't care how long you've, how long you've been in a position, the knowledge is great, the back and forth, the different um, opinions and questions makes everybody think, um, and, and every person here. And I think this is great, I would love to see more of this, not only with this commission, but the airport commission, Parks and Rec, and the council. I'd like to see us all be a lot more engaged than we are, and I just applaud all of you tonight, and thanks for letting me be here and be a part of
Thanks for coming, now we know what council member to go get if we want something.
Comments are not a give and take.
She was just talking. Yeah, I'm talking to the lights.
We, we now move on to comments, would city planner Wellman have any comments this evening?
Well, thank you, everybody, really, this has been really wonderful, um, it's a long time coming, and all of the input is just going to make us better, and um, so, at some point, we do need to figure out what this is going to look like um, for the next meeting, and I can work with the two of you on, on getting that accomplished, okay? And thank you for coming out.
City clerk Newman, do you have any comments this evening?
No, just to say thank you for having me here, um, you guys are, I feel like the planning commission is really our unsung heroes to a degree, you have a big job, it just astounds me with really the amount of information you have to learn, you have to use to walk through land use, I mean, that fundamental land use, somebody's land, right? And so, great job, my door is always open if you have questions, if you want me to come back, if you want to pop in, just give me a call. Um, I'm here for you, and well done, city attorney and everybody, so this was, this was really good.
Thank you. City attorney Wells, do you have any comments this evening?
I won't be really fast, but unfortunately, I do have a comment, and it's just, we, because we're going to be talking about drafting good written findings, um, I'm going to give a worksheet to the um, city planner to distribute to the commission before the next meeting. Um, and we'll have, and I will talk to the city clerk, and we'll figure out a date um, for the February, uh, for one of the February meetings, which I think will probably be the second meeting in February. Um, but again, I'm not committing to that until we have a time to sit down. And then we will um, finish off this first round of training. Thank you all for your patience, I know it's hard, and I know that that style takes a lot more work um, from each commission, commissioner. So, thank you, and thanks to the city clerk for being as knowledgeable and brilliant as she is, and city planner, of course.
Deputy clerk Stanifer, do you have any comments tonight?
Just that it was a great meeting, and I was happy to be here, and Holly, you did an amazing job, and you always do, and thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Brown, do you have any comments?
Well, clerk Jamie says she enjoyed it, but everything I asked, she said no to.
That's what she enjoyed.
That's her job.
I thought her job was to support the commission.
The liaison.
No, thanks for everybody, I hope we don't make this once every 10 years, but this should almost raise to the level of biennial to get this information out, because, especially with the new right, even having a, Holly says she's coming back, but even with the new right, it's going to take a while for everybody to absorb the changes and understand it, and I'm more concerned with how do we get information out to the citizens on how to participate and how to file being an interested party to a conditional release, a conditional use permit, so I think we got some, done great things, but I think unless the public know what we're doing and how we do it and how they can be involved, we're still behind eight ball, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Langill.
I can't thank you enough, Holly, that was a great, I could have gone a couple more hours, so.
You did good.
I look forward to having Jamie or the city clerk's presentation, I hope that's done as soon as possible, but great job, great discussion, I think it opened up the thought process of the commission members, and that helps me personally, so thanks to everybody.
Thank you, Commissioner DeYoung, do you have any comments?
I just want to say thanks. I, I was awake, I thought, I was so tired. I even drank some coffee, so this is good. It was engaging, sometimes these can be awful, and it was fun, so, thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Stafford, do you have any comments?
Uh, yeah, thank you to council member Cottle for being here, we, as the commission, always love it when the council interacts with us, so we can feel like we're part of the same, same team, going for the same goals. Holly, thank you so much for all the work you put into the stuff, your depth of knowledge, even watching the city council meetings, your depth of knowledge is just amazing, and the same thing to you, Jamie, your, not only your knowledge, the, the, the understanding of proceedings and keeping, you know, the meeting on track with where they're at on what a minute to what resolution to, it, it's, it, it, it keeps everything flowing, and so thank you and Sarah, what you guys do in your office, so, yeah, a great meeting, great discussion, looking forward to more of it.
Thank you, as chair of seals, I want to thank all the city staff for their devotion to getting this knowledge to the public and having it be the truth and transparent, so that is more for the city image than we can all imagine. Thanks for the presentation, thank you council member Cottle for your, for your attendance, and that's all I have. So. With no further business at hand, I'm adjur- adjourning this meeting unless an objection is raised. Hearing no objection. The meeting is adjourned at 9:20 PM, thank you everyone.